Good afternoon. Afternoon. Can you hear me? My name is Mary Lou Bealick, and for the last year and a half, it has been my privilege to be the dean of the CUNY School of Law. My job is to welcome you here today. In 1983, a group of progressive law teachers and progressive public interest lawyers asked the question, what would a law school look like if it was dedicated to making lawyers ready to practice, if it took seriously the obligation to diversify the profession because that is our only hope for a civil society, and if it said it's okay for there to be one law school that's loud and proud about having a curriculum, a student body, and a faculty dedicated to creating public interest and social justice lawyers? We were at that time in an elementary school, drinking water out of fountains down here and getting books out of boxes in a gym. We moved here several years ago, and part of my job is to collect moments like this that fill this new building with the spirit of social justice and public interest, with people who are dedicated to advancing the rule of law and making the world a more equal and fair place. I am proud to tell you that we are ranked by U.S. News as having the third-best clinical program in the United States. We have more women on our faculty than any law school in the country. We are the most diverse law school in the country, and we graduate the highest percentage of public interest lawyers of any law school in the country, trailed by more than 10% by number two. I can't think of a gathering that more honors what we stand for than this hearing today, sponsored by the New York City Commission on Human Rights. We are honored to have your commissioner with us. She is a beacon to those of us who know—she reminds me every day of what it would look like if we all took seriously the responsibility that comes with the power that we have to be publicly and out front an agent of change. Thank you. We are deeply honored to have in this room today and so collected in the spirit of this building for all times Congressman Eleanor Holmes Norton. Her career stands as an emblem for all of us, what a lifelong commitment to public service, committed to deeply held values can mean and can bring. And I'm just jazzed to meet her and really grateful that the commission brought her to us in this space. I am going to sit down in a minute. I just want to thank Professor Rick Rosain, who helped to bring this event to us. And his work started many, many, many years ago, and he was an expert and a pioneer on issues like sexual harassment in the workplace. We have among our faculty Professor Julie Goldschide, who is one of the drafters of the Violence Against Women's Act. We have—61% of our students are women against a national average of 51%, and 65% of our faculty are women against 34% nationally. So these issues are near and dear to our hearts. I can't sit down before I tell you what a moment it is for us to also acknowledge that among the staff attorneys at the commission are 11 of our alums. And among the people whose testimony you will hear today are four of our alums. I feel like what our founders set out to do is happening in a way that is making a difference, and I thank you for creating this moment.
Have to push it on. Okay. Now can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. Dean Bealick, Commissioner. And I guess I've got to welcome the panelists, they're not quite here yet today. I want to give a little shout-out for one of our former students and alums, Hollis Fitch, who is the deputy commissioner for enforcement at the commission. Mary Lou already took away my line about the four other alums who are testifying here today, so we welcome all of you. And a special welcome to all the people who are going to be testifying today of their own stories of being targeted for sexual harassment and their ideas about how to address this epidemic of sexual harassment that we're going through right now. I'm sorry, very sorry that my mom could not be here tonight. She's going to be 100 in February. And for those of you who may not know this, that's before women had the right to vote. She was born. Last night she shared with me her own story of sexual harassment. She graduated college at 20. She was one of the few women in her class at Brooklyn College. I'm here today teaching at CUNY because of her opportunities. At that time, it was free, free tuition at All City University. At 20, she graduated. She went to her first job in Manhattan, and she said she was called in the back room by the boss, who showed her something very pornographic, and she said, "I didn't know what to do. I just felt uncomfortable." She had shared this story with me some time before and forgotten that, but that's okay. The point is that we know that sexual harassment is going on for a long time. For decades, I've had the honor of representing many women in sexual harassment cases, many women who have been targeted. And these women, I call them the Tippody iceberg. They were courageous to come forward, but now we have to go below the sea and deal with what's below there. We know the huge number of women, 70% of women who are sexually harassed, simply do not even peep about it because of the fear of retaliation and punishment and career loss. And so we're here to start trying to figure out what else needs to be done. I have the great honor and pleasure to introduce an amazing national civil rights and feminist leader, Congressman Eleanor Holmes Norton. She was my first boss, so I wish for all my students here today, you should only be so lucky to be able to work with a fierce activist lawyer. She was a tough boss. She yelled at me a couple times. Her red pen went through my briefs many times, but I hope for you that you have a similar experience. Her accomplishments are so long and so deep that I could spend hours—I'm not going to spend hours doing that. She has served in Congress, I believe, for almost 28 years now, and I'm just going to tell a few short stories in terms of her persistent advocacy of civil rights, but focus on the issues at hand today: sex discrimination, particularly sexual harassment. Some of you may have seen the original series from Amazon Studios where the actress Joy Bryant plays Congressman Norton in Good Girls Revolt. It is set in 1969. What was happening? Well, there was a cultural change in progress, sweeping the country, but many institutions and employers and organizations were resisting. And one that was focused on in this movie had to do with Newsweek magazine. They were happy to hire really outstanding women to be researchers, but not journalists. And many of the women, quite frankly, thought, well, that was good enough. They got this job. But others also wanted more. Eleanor Holmes Norton, Congresswoman Norton, represented them, and I believe—you could tell me if I'm wrong later on—it was the first class-action sex discrimination case brought under the 1964 Civil Rights Act. In any case, before representing the Newsweek women, Congressman Norton was very much engaged in the struggle for black freedom in this country. For instance, she participated in the 1964 Mississippi Summer, fighting against virulent oppression against black people. And just tonight, here at the law school, and I'm sorry that we all can't share in that, a group of our students are involved in what's called the Mississippi Project, which was founded many years ago by students, and those students go to Mississippi every intercession to work on civil rights issues because Mississippi is still a backward state and needs a lot of struggle in that area. And there is a program here tonight, Rita and Bill Bender, who were civil rights activists down in Mississippi in 1964 and beyond, are actually here tonight, too. Later, as an attorney with the American Civil Liberties Union, she represented Julian Bond. For those of you who might remember, Julian Bond was the head of SNC, the Student Nonviolent Coordinating Committee, which was a group of revolutionary young people who really decided that they were going to organize in different ways, and they were all very courageous people. Congressman Norton was the first woman chair of the New York City Commission on Human Rights from 1970 to 1971, and she was the first woman to chair the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission. I believe she was appointed by President Carter in 1977. And as chair of the City Commission on Human Rights, she held the first public hearings in the country on discrimination against women, which was—you know, these hearings were amazing, and she was one who stirred up a lot of trouble. She was a government agitator, tax-paid. And they produced such reports that one, called The Women's Role in Contemporary Society, the report in New York Commission on Human Rights, was actually published as a book. Under her leadership—and I worked on some of this—the commission aggressively investigated racial discrimination, employment, and housing, and they sent testers out to find out what was going on. And I understand that's been revived, so that's great, Commissioner, that you are doing that, too. And guess what? One of the developers that was found to be racially discriminatory was in Queens. His name was Trump, okay? In fairness to the current occupier of the White House, it was his father, but he was closely working with him. As I mentioned, Congresswoman Norton was appointed by President Carter in 1977 to head up the EOC, and she and her staff were responsible for setting the very strong foundations for the development of sexual harassment law. In 1980, the Guidelines of Sexual Harassment were published to inform everybody what was sexual harassment. As we have vividly seen over the last few months, the laws and social and workplace culture require profound structural changes to be able to more effectively stop and prevent sexual harassment. I leave you with one more image before I bring on this extraordinary person who's going to be our opening speaker for this very important and timely hearing. And this is the image. I hope some of you have seen this. In 1990, what was happening? Well, we had a hearing before the all-male, all-white Senate Judiciary Committee, where our hero Thurgood Marshall was being replaced by a man by the name Clarence Thomas. And there was a hearing, and of course, you all know, there were allegations of sexual harassment by Professor Anita Hill against him. She had worked for him when he was the chair, believe it or not, of the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission, and that's where the sexual harassment occurred. And there was an attempt to shut her down and to shut her supporters down, and I remember this photograph of Eleanor Holmes Norton and five or six other women literally charging up the Capitol steps. You've got to see this charge, up the Capitol steps, into the Senate chambers to demand that Professor Hill be allowed to testify. It is my great pleasure to bring this charging, demanding woman and fierce advocate for social justice Congresswoman Norton to the podium.
Well, thank you very much, Rick. I should stop and let you do your work? And may I apologize if I yelled at you. That's just my tone of voice, Rick, when I'm trying to get something done. And I have to tell you, there's a lot more yelling to do in the Congress of the United States these days. And I thank you, Rick, for how you laid out some of my work. I thank Dean Bealick for being here, and I especially thank the chair of the commission, Kamala Malala, because she is doing groundbreaking leadership work where it is most needed today. Yes, I come from Washington. That's where the leadership should come from. A lot of things, you're not getting leadership on these days. But the best leadership, particularly on issues like sexual harassment, are not going to come from those of us who are further from the people. When I was at the AOC, we used to say, "We're on the ground," and that's how we know what's happening, and that's why we have hearings to tell us more about what's happening. So it is a very special pleasure for me to leave Washington, even on a Wednesday, the busiest legislative day, to come to New York because of the work. And I think it is path-breaking work that the New York City, under the chairwoman Malala, is doing. And I thank you for that work. I must tell you that when I was invited to speak at a hearing of the New York City Commission on Human Rights, I felt right at home. This is certainly where I belong. And you're doing the kind of work that I tried to do, and I must tell you, it gladdens my heart to see the commission carrying on that kind of work today in this environment at another time and another place, but where it is particularly needed. So whether in New York at the commission or in Washington at the EOC or indeed in the Congress, first let me indicate how important hearings of the kind you're about to engage in are. They were exquisitely important for the work I did at the commission and at the EOC. If you don't hear from the people, if you don't hear from those who are affected, you cannot do your work. Soon after I became chair of the New York City Commission on Human Rights, you have heard that I held the first hearings in the country—that late—on sex discrimination issues. Why is it that that was—I mean, maybe almost 15 years after the 1964 Civil Rights Act had been passed? Why were there no hearings on women's rights? Well, part of the reason is that we have a national Equal Employment Opportunity Commission because black people came forward and brought the issues of racial discrimination to the country and achieved the three great civil rights laws, the 1964 Civil Rights Act, including Title VII. It was my great honor to administer the 1965 Voting Rights Act and the 1968 Fair Housing Act. That didn't happen because government got some chime in its ears to tell it what to do. It happened because black people came forward. So the commission—and very often, even the New York City Commission—was responsive largely to those who were responsible for getting the statute in the first place. As you know, women were literally thrown in at the last minute for Title VII of the 1964 Civil Rights Act. And imagine that, the notion that, well, you know, we know. How could you avoid understanding? After slavery and discrimination for almost 400 years, it was discrimination against black people. But wait a minute. Women are your children. Women are the people that men sleep with every night. How come you didn't know about that form of discrimination? When I was at the New York City Commission on Human Rights, I went into the city to say to women's groups, "Where are you? Why am I only receiving complaints from people of color?" So yes, the burden is always going to be on those who experience the offense, and women are taking that burden. And I am here this evening because the New York City Commission on Human Rights has accepted that burden. And I want you to know that hearings, even before you engage in enforcement, can promote action. At our commission, these commissions, just on women's issues and on discrimination, we heard virtually every woman who was prominently involved felt she had to testify. So we heard from people—from Bula Saunders of the National Welfare Rights Movement and Dorothy Haidt of the National Council of Negro Women, to academic stars like Margaret Mead and movement leaders like Betty Friedan. That's just how novel it was to have a hearing on women's issue. You heard about a book that was published after. It wasn't a book. It was a pocketbook. It was so novel to have hearings on women's issues that a major publisher just took it unto himself to publish a pocketbook for wide distribution to be sold to members of the public. It was called Women's Role in Contemporary Society. So it tells you how broadly based those hearings were. Those hearings produced action. Four months after the hearings, the New York State Legislature placed household workers under the minimum wage law of New York State for the first time ever. Hearings matter, my friends. And I believe these hearings will matter because the New York City Commission hearings are right on time to produce important results. They may or may not involve changes in law. You already have a strong law. Today's hearings, though, do show that the baton has been handed and accepted to the enforcement agency to make sexual harassment rare. The commission has taken hold of a very difficult issue in the best way. They've got to hear from people. They've got to know what they're talking about. And when I say know what they're talking about, don't just assume because these are experts at the New York City Commission that they know what sexual harassment is. I mean, if I were to go around this room and say, "Define for me what you think sexual harassment is," I'm sure I'd get very different answers, and I am convinced that most men and women are not sure of what sexual harassment is. There is work to be done here, friends. But the most work to be done is going to be done, in my judgment, by agencies like the New York City Commission because they are closest to typical women who experience sexual harassment where the spotlight has yet to turn. Periodically—this is not the first time—national interest is stirred by accusations of high-profile figures, from Clarence Thomas to Harvey Weinstein. Well, thank you very much. And it's particularly stirred when that harassment is said to have taken place in the palaces of power, from the Supreme Court and Congress to Hollywood and TV. These are places of ultimate power and influence where women incur maximum risk in alleging sexual harassment. Yet I believe sexual harassment is far more likely to occur in typical workplaces involving typical men and women. We will find out if we have more hearings like this. I don't believe that the average, high-profile man is going around sexually harassing everybody in place. I do believe it's much easier to engage in sexual harassment in workplaces that you and I know. The commission hearings, therefore, do mark an important day for an enforcement agent stepping forward themselves. The women who came forward have shown great courage, and you've been reading about them. They have not sought a remedy for themselves. Statute of limitations has long passed when these women came forward, but they have rendered—these women, they're women we never heard of before—they have rendered an important public service by exposing a national problem that had gone unattended because it floats beneath the surface of human interactions. It is very difficult to prove. No matter what happens, we do still have due process in this country. That's why the enforcement agencies cannot do this alone and can't do it by enforcement alone. Sexual harassment is not like other forms of discrimination. It is mostly unwitnessed and uncorroborated. It is personal and not public. Therefore, it is very different from the other forms of discrimination that we're all accustomed to: failure to hire, failure to promote. When I chaired the EEOC, the courts had not even embraced sexual harassment as a violation of Title VII of the 1964 Civil Rights. And the reason is largely because the agency hadn't embraced it. There were a few district court cases, and the courts didn't quite know how to deal with this that didn't look like other forms of discrimination. There was no court of appeals case. Employers and employees alike had no idea what these words meant. They weren't even coined by the agency. I don't know where the words came from. So we thought the most important thing was to do what the New York City Commission is doing today: wholesome hearings, educate yourselves, enforcers, and help educate the public at the same time. Get the information, get the evidence, and get it from all parties. What resulted were the Guidelines on Sexual Harassment as a violation of the Act, and the Supreme Court ultimately embraced those guidelines, where the commission defined sexual harassment, and to this very day, they're used by the courts. It's very interesting. When I came to the EOC, I thought, well, I got rid of a backlog of cases at the New York City Commission on Human Rights, so I'm going to get remembered, if at all, for getting rid of the backlog, the notorious backlog at the Equal Employment Opportunities Commission. But I'm here to tell you that the sexual harassment guidelines overrode the backlog and in the public domain— and in the public domain, sexual harassment guidelines became what was important about my service at the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission. Women were hungry for official recognition of this workforce plague and for indication that something could be done about it. You mean if a man comes and offers an unwelcome sexual advance, the law enables me to do something about it? Somebody ought to tell me so. I do believe progress was made, witness the thousands of women who come forward today, but it's only about 7,000 each year. Is that the sum total of it? I don't want to speculate, I would hope so. But think of who these women are. Think of yourself. If you were harassed, if somebody continued to come forward with an unwelcome sexual advance, would the first thing you'd do? To run willy-nilly to the New York City Commission or to the local office? And I see Elektra York, who worked with me, both at the New York City Commission and at the EEOC, and she's still at it, at the EEOC local office. Is the first thing you would do is run to Elektra? Or run to the New York City Commission? Incurring the real risk about something that had happened to you that nobody else saw and nobody else knew anything about? Remember, women who filed those complaints at the EEOC or at the New York City Commission are not seeking to expose a problem the way the women have done against President Trump, for example. They are not seeking a societal remedy. In fact, they are seeking a remedy, they're not seeking any revenge or any exposure. Something has happened to them personally, and they want a personal remedy for an unwitnessed act. Try that one on for size. Notwithstanding the sexual harassment complaints that are filed in federal, state, and local commissions by courageous women, I do not believe that we have really begun to penetrate the true extent of this problem. The Congress, I can report this evening, is floundering. Last week, we passed a bill, dig this, requiring posting of employment discrimination rights and training for members of Congress and staff. I'm pleased to report that the Congress of the United States passed that bill. No applause, one handcapping is quite enough. Look, I had already done that as a member of Congress with my own office. I had already taken the video, it's only a half-hour video. Every member could have done that. We didn't need the leadership to say, now it's the law, you must do that. All you have to ask yourself is, how come that was not a part of what Congress did when it added a whole slew of work, including Title VII, to be applied to Congress? Why did they leave this out? It shows you how much work needs to be done. Yes, in the early 90s, we passed 13 laws, including Title VII, to make them applicable that long after the 1964 Civil Rights Act was passed to members of Congress. Still, Congress is not covered by every workplace law. It is required of other employers, and I have a bill pending as I speak in the Congress to bring Congress under every workplace law that it imposes on every other American. And remember, Congress bought itself under Title VII in the early 1990s only after, here we go again, a high-profile scandal involving Senator Bob Packwood, just as it took Harvey Weinstein and his scandal to spark concern about sexual harassment today and to get us on the House floor last week. So it is a fair question this evening to ask. Are women condemned to await episodic, high-profile scandals as a way to get attention to widespread sexual harassment in the workplace of every sector of the American economy? Yes, women have found strength in numbers, not a movement, but individual women, one after another, coming forward. But in turn, having done that, they have now passed the ball to where? Well, I think the ball is with legislatures like the Congress and enforcement agencies like the New York City Commission on Human Rights and to the EEOC. I see the New York City has accepted the burden, I can't say the rest. I can't say the other powerful law enforcement actors have as yet done so. So no longer should it be one woman against one powerful man, Anita Hill accusing Clarence Thomas. Actually, it has become several women accusing Roy Moore, that's progress. When these women came forward, one after another, and there's not an American, even those in Alabama, that doesn't believe each and every one of them. So what does this represent? Are we seeing something different? I believe there has been a cultural shift. You would not see women coming forward in the way they are if there had not been a cultural shift initiated by women. And you're seeing something else which tells you there's a cultural shift. Real men are apologizing, not denying the sexual harassment which has not been witnessed. Now, we know that there are notorious holdouts, like Donald Trump, who's been accused of sexual harassment by more than 20 women and continues to deny it. He even denied what he said that was heard by the whole world on television. And the holdout of note today is Roy Moore, where half a dozen accusers have cited everything from pedophilia to aggressively seeking dates with teenagers when he was a district attorney. Increasingly, these are an exception to men who are man enough to face up and apologize. This cultural shift should pave the way for what the country badly needs to have happen next. And the enforcement agencies can play a leading role here. Women are doing their part. Those who have the tools must now step forward, as the New York City Commission is doing this evening, to do their own part. I don't come this evening, I regret to say, with prescriptions or answers. I don't know what they are. I regret that I won't be able to stay to hear what the witnesses have to say so that I could carry it back to Washington. I will be looking forward to the report for how it informs us as to what we ought to be doing. Because Congress has just begun to have a series of hearings, you don't even hear much about them. So I have no advice to offer to the states or to New York City. In fact, if you think about it, not only on sexual harassment, but for years now, increasingly, members of Congress have been looking to states and cities who are closer to the issues for guidance rather than the other way around. So today, the New York City Commission on Human Rights is performing a public service, and not alone for New York. They are stepping forward to offer leadership from where we have every reason to respect most, from people who are closer to the problem. I am here, though, this evening to applaud the role that New York City is playing as it has often played. I'm gonna be, and that role is looking a problem straight in the eye, then becoming a leader to say to the rest of the nation politely, see, that wasn't so hard. So I thank the chair, I thank the commission for once again taking on the mantle of leadership. And as one member of Congress, let me say I look forward to following you. Thank you very much for what you're doing this evening.
I'm Carmela P. Malalas, I'm the Chair and Commissioner for the New York City Commission on Human Rights. And I have to say yet again, I'm so incredibly proud to welcome you back to New York City tonight, Congresswoman Norton. You know, I want to thank you for taking your time out. I know you rarely leave DC, and for you to leave DC for us tonight means a lot for us, but it also means a lot for this city. I think, as you said, this is a historic hearing, and you have truly been an inspiration to me and my staff. I can't tell you how many times your work and your legacy, particularly in these types of areas, are referenced at the Commission on Human Rights as we aspire to rebuild and reinvigorate the commission to fulfill its mission that you've set out for, of ensuring that all New Yorkers are treated with dignity and respect. I also personally want to thank you for paving the way for me and many other women, especially women of color, in public service. A lot of us here are here because of the work that you have done, and I thank you for that. And folks in public service know that no one person can accomplish anything alone in public service. So I also want to take a moment to thank our very important partners here tonight, without whom tonight's hearing would not have been pulled together so quickly or so swiftly. I want to, of course, thank CUNY Law School and Dean Beelock, Professor Rick Rossain, and all of the CUNY Law staff for being such gracious hosts. I know that you're all in the midst of wrapping up the fall semester, so we thank you for accommodating us and welcoming us here on such short notice. I also want to thank the New York Women's Foundation and their staff for being our cosponsors tonight, for providing logistical, financial, and promotional support for this hearing. New York Women's Foundation's extraordinary commitment to economic justice and safety and health for women and their families was evident when it immediately agreed to partner with the commission on tonight's hearing, to give voice to the diversity of women and other workers we're gonna hear from tonight across different industries that have been affected by sexual harassment in the workplace. So thank you. I want to also acknowledge the presence of our public advocate, public advocate Letitia James is here. She's the first woman of color elected to citywide office in New York City, and she's a fierce and unstoppable advocate for women. I also want to acknowledge my colleague Julie Menin. Julie Menin is the Commissioner of the Mayor's Office of Media and Entertainment. She's taken on the fight to ensure that the theater, the television, and film industries are also held accountable in New York City and working with the city in making sure that we make sexual harassment a thing of the past. I also want to give a shout out to Jacqueline Ebanks, who's here tonight. Jacqueline is the Executive Director of the City's Commission on Gender Equity and a very frequent partner for the Commission on Human Rights, so thank you for being here as well. So we're here, it's 40 years after the historic first hearings on gender discrimination were held in the country, right here, in New York City, by the Commission on Human Rights. And while it's no longer remarkable that women lead city agencies, or the city council, or our public advocate, or have reached the top tiers of many industries, we are still grossly underrepresented in leadership in practically all sectors. And it is no more acute in those sectors where the greatest wealth is generated and concentrated, in tech, in finance, in media and entertainment, to name just a few. The lack of women in leadership in true positions of power has facilitated and contributed to the abuse of power by others that so often leave women victimized, harassed, ostracized, and isolated, preventing them from advancing in their careers or escaping oppressive, often unsafe, work environments and perpetuating a very intentional cycle that serves only those in power. We are here, however, right now, experiencing this watershed moment in women's rights movements and the movement for social justice and civil rights, where women and men and non-binary people are bravely coming forward at no benefit to themselves, and in fact, at much risk, to share their stories of sexual harassment and assault across industries. The wave of people like Tarana Burke, people claiming the hashtag #metoo, and others breaking their silence has been steady and it's been unrelenting. And it is my hope that tonight's hearing allows even more voices to be heard, even more stories to be surfaced. The power structures that have existed for so long to allow this behavior to persist, for in some cases decades, to silence victims, to shame victims, and to make victims believe they are powerless, they are crumbling around us. Sexual harassment is being exposed for what it is. It's an abuse of power, an abuse of privilege. And it is being exposed with women leading the way. While the entertainment industry dominates the headlines, we know that low-wage workers, immigrant workers, domestic workers, LGBTQ workers, and workers of color experience sexual harassment at extremely high rates. And their unique and intersecting vulnerabilities make it even harder for them to assert their rights, protect themselves, and demand justice. We also acknowledge that sexual harassment is not limited to the workplace. It occurs in housing, it occurs on the street, in public transit, in schools, in jails, prisons, and immigrant detention, and in many other contexts. But tonight, we have chosen to focus on sexual harassment in the workplace as a starting point. But there are many more stories to tell. We are here tonight to hear from workers and advocates across industries. And despite our best efforts to reach out to as many workers, organizations, and advocates as possible in a short amount of time, we will not hear from all industries where we all know that sexual harassment is particularly pervasive. If you're asking yourself, why isn't someone testifying about the abuses in academia or news media? The answer is likely that there is great hesitation in coming forward and speaking about one's own experiences in industries in which people still hope to have some future. This is, of course, a challenge workers routinely face across all industries. And so tonight, we also acknowledge the bravery and the power of the people who will be speaking here tonight, and to all who have shared their stories over the past few months. We want to remind you that you may still submit written testimony to the commission, even if you do not wish to speak here tonight. The commission will consider all written and oral testimony as we formulate a report with recommendations and findings. That written testimony can still be submitted up through the end of this month. I also want to take a moment to note the important involvement of our city's businesses and employers. For true impact and real change cannot be made without their commitment to eradicating sexual harassment. Indeed, the speed with which we put together this hearing was in part prompted by the many calls and other queries that the Commission on Human Rights received from New York City's employers. People asking or entities asking, how can we do better? What should we be doing? So tonight, we want to learn from you on how the city can better address sexual harassment and how we can work to dismantle the systems that allow sexual harassment to continue with impunity and hold harassers and those complicit with them accountable. We want your input on how we can advise businesses and employers to act affirmatively and proactively. The New York City Human Rights Law is one of the broadest and the most protective anti-discrimination and anti-harassment and anti-harassment protections in the country, and we at the Commission are using it every day to ensure that New Yorkers have access to justice. But we know we can do better. We know we can do more. We are here to learn from you about what you'd like us to do, how can we do things differently, how can we help you, and we look forward to working with all of you towards that. To that end, I want all Commission staff to please stand or identify yourselves, put your arms up. People in this room should know that we serve you. Please seek out Commission staff members. You have to see us as a resource and as a partner, and for you to do that, you need to actually know who we are. You need to see that there's actually human beings behind government. In addition, we have several of our Law Enforcement Bureau attorneys here tonight. They're over there. They're here, so if you have questions tonight, if you feel so empowered tonight, and you're considering bringing a claim to the Commission, please come and speak with them tonight. Finally, tonight, I'm honored to be joined by my esteemed co-panelists, who I'll introduce briefly. Commissioner of the Department of Consumer Affairs, Lorelei Salas. Commissioner Salas has worked for over a decade enforcing New York state labor laws, and now at DCA oversees the implementation of key municipal work laws. Human Rights Commissioner Kathy Albisa. Ms. Albisa is the Executive Director of the National Economic and Social Rights Initiative, which has worked for over a decade on human rights abuses, including in corporate supply chains, and has led to the creation of the Fair Food Program in the tomato sector, which has been lauded for, among other things, being one of the most effective anti-sexual harassment programs for low-wage workers in the country. Human Rights Commissioner Carrie Davis. Carrie is a health and human services leader and social worker committed to meaningful change in the areas of HIV, substance abuse, healthcare, and human rights. She has worked extensively with and serves on numerous advisory boards and planning committees for New York City and state to develop guidelines, policies, regulations, and best practices to better address the needs of lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender people. Gender Equity Commissioner Beverly Tillery. Beverly Tillery is the Executive Director of the New York City Anti-Violeance Project, an organization that works to address and end all forms of violence through organizing and education, and supports survivors through counseling and advocacy. She is an experienced thought leader, advocate, and national organizer with nearly three decades of experience working in social justice movements. We will be transcribing all remarks and will be videotaping and webstreaming the entire hearing live on YouTube. As I mentioned, if you have not already done so, we encourage you to submit written testimony to the Commission by sending it via email to policy@chhr.nyc.gov by December 31st. We're going to review all written testimony and oral testimony to inform an upcoming report that we will publish in 2018 with findings and policy recommendations, hopefully by industry. Again, we thank you all for being here tonight for this essential public hearing, and I want to now open it up to the first panel of individuals here to testify. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody, and first, I just want to thank the New York City Commission on Human Rights for hosting this very important hearing on sexual harassment in the workplace. Having met Tarana Burke and Anita Hill, I know I stand on the shoulders of greats. And on that note, in Mrs. Hill's opening statement on October 1991, when she testified before the Senate Judiciary Committee, she spoke about her encounter with sexual harassment in the government workspace. She stated that what happened to her in telling the world about it were the two most difficult experiences in her life. Well, my name is Nantashamone Williams, and today I say Me Too. While all industries have grappled with sexual assault and harassment, I find its prevalence to be distinct in high-powered fields such as entertainment, politics, and government. As a person who has spent most of her professional career in government, I have also unfortunately been exposed to the discomforting and disgusting acts of sexual assault and sexual harassment in the workplace. The media sometimes sensationalizes these experiences, and that is something I deeply wish did not occur. However, I want to publicly condemn the unwanted advances, the elongated stares, and the hugs which were too tight and lasted too long. Upon my initial admittance into government, I felt that my quick success was attributed to my diligence and brilliance. I soon realized that many of my colleagues did not feel the same. Some did not see me or appreciate me for my hard work or intellectual contribution. There were those who saw me as eye candy, as possible instant gratification, someone who is young and naive and eager to climb the ranks by any means necessary, wet behind the ears, as some may call it. I often thought that maybe it was something I might have said, or an outfit I may have worn. This began to strain my working situation, as people who I felt should be trusted colleagues began to make inappropriate comments and sexual suggestions, some subtle and some not-so-subtle, but all wrong and inappropriate. As a woman, it is easy to blame yourself, because that is what the culture has taught us. It is easy to be silent and give people a pass because you are afraid that speaking up or telling them no may jeopardize your professional growth. This has caused me to be pressured in socializing in ways that I did not want to, and to deal with conversations which made me uncomfortable, essentially normalizing the behavior. My story, as unfortunate as it may be, is also unfortunately not unique. As one of the national organizers of the Women's March on Washington earlier this January, I have traveled to various states and have heard a number of accounts from powerful women who felt less than because of the feelings which surfaced due to unwanted sexual advances, picture messages, and other horrifying occurrences which they experienced from their supervisors, their subordinates, and their colleagues alike. I have been told that the right thing to do is to push back and to check folks, let them know that you will not allow professional and social lives to be mixed, and will not allow someone to degrade you through sexual assault and sexual harassment. The truth is that it is difficult to do so in politics and in government. Sexual innuendos and unwanted flirtatious atmospheres in the workplace have been normalized for far too long for both men and women. It wasn't until hearing the Me Too stories that many people began to realize how much they, we, as a society, have actually normalized certain behaviors. That has been my story, dealing with unwanted conversations, text messages, and emails. That has also been the story of so many other people. I think of a very good friend of mine, a young black man in government, who has discreetly shared stories with me of him facing unwanted sexual advances by women in the workplace, sometimes physical and sometimes verbal, and when he was denied such advances, having his sexuality questioned and his professional growth and upward mobility threatened. That is why hearings such as this one, where we allow women and men to speak their truths, is so important. Although we see that these sexual advances are happening more with women, we know that is also about power, so that we can shed light and address the disease which plagues our society, so that people all over in politics, government, construction, schools, restaurants, athletics, and all industries know that sexual harassment is not to be accepted, and that they are not alone, we all are not alone, it is okay to say no, and our no must be respected. Thank you.
To the Chair, to the Commission, to the panel, first, let me begin by saying I applaud Senator Gillibrand today for her announcement urging the resignation of Senator Frankel, and I joined her in that. My name is Letitia James, and I am the public advocate for the City of New York. In the post-Me Too era, the whole world now knows what women have known since we first set foot in this workplace, since we first went to school, since we were old enough to understand the differences between right and wrong. Sexual harassment is pervasive, it is corrosive, and it has been a silent roadblock on the road to career growth for generations. Up to 85% of women report that they have been sexually harassed at work, according to a 2016 report by the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission. We know this, but we do not know, or we could never know, is what we have lost. How many women were forced to quit jobs or pushed out of careers they excelled at? How many women left entire industries? How many women have shelved their ambitions, their hopes, and their dreams, lost their livelihoods because of retaliation? How many billions of dollars in productivity were lost due to toxic workplaces? How many inventions were never invented, and companies never started, and ladders never climbed, and glass ceilings never cracked? We just don't know, we will never know. What we do know is that sexual harassment pervades every industry, at every income level, for every race, ethnicity, and sexual identity, across the political spectrum, from the White House to the halls of Congress. And one New Yorker who contacted my office was harassed at her restaurant job by coworkers because of her sexual orientation. The ongoing harassment caused her so much stress that she had a panic attack and blacked out at the restaurant. Her doctor told her that it was likely the high state of anxiety that caused her to blackout. She received a large bill from the hospital that she cannot afford to pay, which has increased her anxiety levels even more. This is one of the millions of untold stories. So we have a responsibility to do better to protect workers like this, New Yorkers whose jobs are at risk, whose health is at risk, whose financial security and futures are at risk. We can't live in a world where the only way harasses are held accountable is if they are famous enough to merit news coverage. Until women are paid the same for the same work, until women's healthcare is simply viewed as healthcare, until we can stop counting, on one hand, the number of women in board seats and CEO positions, until maternity leave is a right and not a privilege, until every woman I know has more stories of empowerment than harassment, gender equity will continue to be important. And we need to hold companies and individuals accountable, even if their names aren't splashed across the front page. We need to get rid of forced arbitration, so that if women are harassed and abused, they are free to speak out and seek legal remedies in court, and this horrendous behavior can be put to a stop. We need more transparency and oversight, over-disclosure agreements, which are often used to cover up sexual harassment or sexual discrimination, and we also need more women to run for office. We should consider mandating at least one dedicated HR professional for all companies over a certain size. We should also have diversity officers and diversity trainings at all city agencies, including the Department of Education. I strongly commend the Chair and the New York City Commission on Human Rights for their extremely progressive stance on what constitutes sexual harassment, and the record-level monetary damages they secured for complainants who were subjected to sexual harassment in the workplace. But since I was invited to come here and make suggestions, I would add the following to my praise. CHR should do more outreach, both to the broader public and employment attorneys that might be less familiar with the human rights law, and let them know that CHR is very much open for business. I would also recommit focusing on additional staffing for the next round of agency budget requests. And every violation of the human rights law is important and time-sensitive, but rapid resolution of workplace sexual harassment and discrimination is among the most pressing. I also suggest dedicating more resources to offering substantive training on sexual harassment and help to small and mid-size organizations seeking to develop clear anti-harassment policies. This includes not-for-profit as well as for-profit organizations. The sort of training offered by large firms can be cost prohibitive for a lot of small and mid-size employees, and I believe CHR is well-suited to help fill that void, possibly alongside small business services. Finally, it would be great to do more with bystander training, so many careers can be saved if only victims didn't feel so alone. I was heartened to see that Time Magazine's Person of the Year are the Silence Breakers speaking out against sexual harassment. Instead of keeping quiet about these assaults and unlawful acts, they spoke out and spread the word to harm others and try to stop future attacks. I want to thank the Commission for holding this important hearing today to show these and other women and workers that the government is here to protect them and to ensure that justice is done and that perpetrators are stopped. I would be remiss if I didn't thank the Commission today for, again, inviting to the forum one of my sheros, Congresswoman Holmes Norton, who I studied in law school along with the late Congresswoman Barbara Jordan. And then to her, and to all of those shoulders I stand on, and the countless women who are here in this room, we will not tolerate, we will not normalize sexual harassment, from the White House again to the halls of Congress, and we will not allow our rights to be eroded in Washington. We do that in honor of the women whose faces were flashed on the screen before us, and they include Mrs. Coretta Scott King, the late Shirley Chisholm, and Gloria Steinem. It is in their honor and in their tradition that we will continue the fight to resist. Thank you.
I'm Julie Menon, Commissioner at the Mayor's Office of Media and Entertainment, and I really want to thank the New York City Commission on Human Rights for hosting this important and incredibly timely hearing on sexual harassment in the workplace, and thank you for the opportunity to testify this evening. So as everyone who keeps up with the news these days knows, the media and entertainment industries have been rocked by multiple reports of sexual harassment, misconduct, and even assault on the part of famous and powerful men in recent months, weeks, and days, and we obviously feel there will be more to come in that regard. Many are calling this a watershed cultural moment, and one that is empowering women and other victims of sexual misconduct to speak out about experiences that were once kept secret and swept under the rug. The fact that victims are breaking the silence about these horrific events is clearly a crucial first step. But quite honestly, now the question is, now what? At the Mayor's Office of Media and Entertainment, we have been acutely aware of the underrepresentation of women in the film and television industries since well before this season of bombshell revelations, and we believe this underrepresentation, particularly in positions of power in the filmed entertainment industry, as well as in the news media, is deeply intertwined with the problem of sexual harassment and misconduct. For the last 20 years, according to a recent white paper by the Women's Media Action Coalition, the percentage of women in key positions in the top 350 films has remained exactly flat, at 17%, never having reached more than 19%. This is despite the fact that women make up 50% of film school graduates. In primetime television, the numbers are honestly not much better. Women have not succeeded in breaking the 30% mark in key positions. This lack of women in decision-making and green-lighting positions has everything to do with the kinds of stories that are told, and how women are represented on the ubiquitous screens that we and our children are increasingly watching. Only 29% of leading characters in top-grossing films are women, despite the fact that we are 51% of the population. Women of color are even more scarce on screen. Of the leading characters who are women, only 4% are African-American, 4% are Latina, and 2% are Asian. With men doing the lion's share of the creating and green-lighting of shows and movies, and men dominating so many writers' rooms, women are frequently portrayed in stereotypical and often highly-sexualized fashion. Women are rarely depicted in positions of power on the screen. A third of women that are on screen and on TV are oftentimes, according to studies, shown in provocative clothing, while just 8% of men are. The Women's Media Action Coalition reportedly found that female actors actually peak, what they're calling "peak" at age 30, meaning that that is a prime time where they're offered the most role, while their male counterparts are so-called "peaking" at age 46. There are twice as many male characters over 50 as women on TV and on screen. Also, female characters also get killed off more frequently than men. This misrepresentation of women, and the, quite frankly, obsessive attention to women's looks over their intelligence or their abilities, has dire consequences for all of us certainly, but most particularly especially for girls and women who are forming their identities and their aspirations. It is no stretch to say that it contributes in no small part to a culture of sexual harassment. Quote, "Media creates consciousness, and if what gets put out there that creates our consciousness is determined by men, we're not going to make any progress." That quote was by Jane Fonda, and she said it in a documentary called Misrepresentation. Or more succinctly, from the same film, "You can't be what you can't see." Men also dominate the news media across all platforms, according to the Women's Media Center's latest report on the status of women in media. It found- It found that at twenty of the nation's top news outlets, men produce sixty-two-point-three percent of news reports analyzed during a study period, while women produce thirty-seven-point-seven percent of news reports. Additionally, in the broadcast news sector alone, work by women anchors, field reporters, and correspondents actually declined, falling to twenty-five-point-two percent of reports in 2016 from thirty-two percent in prior years. A little more than a year ago, in September 2016, our office announced a five-part initiative targeting the under-representation of women, both on and off camera. We became the first municipal agency in the country to address the stubborn gender inequity problem in film and television. The initiatives included a $5 million fund that will provide direct grants to support film and theater projects by, for, and about women, pitch workshops for women filmmakers, and a film financing conference connecting women filmmakers with financing for their projects, and a screenwriting contest for scripts written by, for, and about women. And the two finalists in that competition have now had their pilot episodes made by diverse women-led crews at the Feierstein Graduate School of Cinema. And one of those two pilots will be greenlit a series on NYC Life, which is our flagship channel. And speaking of NYC Life, we've created an inspiring block of program featuring women. We created a new show called Her Big Idea, profiling women entrepreneurs in the city, and I'm happy to say it's our highest-rated show. And we also greenlit a new series called The Vanguard, featuring women in media. Clearly, there is pent-up demand to see strong women in decision-making roles. If you film it, they will watch. Much more, and I'm wrapping up, much more needs to be done, I'm sorry, last sentence, much more needs to be done and can be done to change the narrative of women working in the male-dominated media and entertainment fields. To quote Katie Couric, "The media can be an instrument of change, it can awaken people and change minds, but it all depends on who's piloting the plane." Thank you.
My name is Amy Hong, and I'm a staff attorney with the Legal Aid Society's Employment Law Unit. And we want to thank Commissioner and Chair Kamala Malas and the partners and the panel for hosting this hearing, as it's very timely. Victims of sexual harassment should know that civil rights agencies support them and can reinforce for employers, and any unwelcome sexual advances will not be tolerated. At the Legal Aid Society's Employment Law Unit, we represent low-wage workers, primarily immigrant workers, and various claims against their employers in state and federal court and under, and as well as in the local and state and federal agencies. The flood of sexual misconduct allegations in recent weeks has come largely from women in white-collar professions. However, low-wage workers are often the most vulnerable workers and are therefore less likely to speak out. Low-wage workers can't afford to lose their jobs. Moreover, often low-wage workers don't speak English and don't know the procedure for reporting abuse. Sometimes they are immigrants, and their status to be in this country is dependent on their employer. Sexual harassment is about an imbalance of power between the harasser and the victim, and the more vulnerable the worker, the more egregious the sexual misconduct can be. In a case of mine, the facts were straightforward. My client, a single mom and sole supporter of her young child, worked as an office manager in a small office and endured a campaign of harassing sexual remarks and harassing physical behavior by her direct supervisor and owner of the company, her boss, Spectral. Despite her objections, her supervisor continued his behavior. She endured as much as she could because her livelihood was on the line. But eventually, she quit her job, feeling powerless in her position and unable to stop her supervisor from harassing her. This is just one example of the many clients we represent who want to work in peace but are sexually harassed in the workplace. Many of them are afraid to complain because it would be at the cost of potentially losing their employment and their ability to support their families. In this particular case, the client came seeking assistance in her claim for unemployment insurance and was unfamiliar about what her rights were to be free from sexual harassment in the workplace. We had to educate her about the law and the options that were available to vindicate her rights, and many low-wage workers do not have access to such information when the harassment begins. And we know that the Commission has done a great campaign, public campaign, to educate workers about their rights in the workplace, and we encourage the Commission to continue that and to specifically allocate and increase resources to target employers where there are higher incidences of sexual harassment or of vulnerable low-wage workers. Also in this case described, the harasser was our client's supervisor, HR rep, owner of the company, all wrapped into one. Thus, he was the individual with the ultimate power in the workplace. Our client had nowhere to complain to her employer outside of her perpetrator. A victim of sexual harassment should have multiple avenues in which to file a safe complaint. Ideally, employers should be required to provide different points of contact and a range of methods for a victim to complain, even anonymously if they wanted to. However, for small employers, as in the case I just described, there are not many places where a victim can safely report. Because of this problem, we encourage the Commission to develop a hotline, specifically for sexual harassment victims who are still on the job. This would provide employees with a method of complaining and the ability to ask for immediate assistance. Once an internal complaint is made, the company should do an investigation into the allegations. However, for small employers, a thorough and fair investigation is unlikely. The Commission can step in and conduct investigations in response to complaints received on its hotline. Although the Commission already conducts investigations involving violations of the human rights law, we would encourage the Commission to develop a specific unit to handle harassment and retaliation complaints on an expedited basis, especially for those who are still on the job. Early intervention could stop further harassment from continuing in the workplace and can save a job by preventing any retaliatory behavior. The Commission could look to the New York State's Department of Labor as a model, where their anti-retaliation unit steps in right away to warn of repercussions for violations of the law. Again, this would only be effective for current employees if the investigation and intervention occurs on an expedited basis. The employment laws are designed to protect workers, yet they are useless unless they are enforced. Although resource-intensive sexual harassment cases should be filed and litigated, funding should be made available to the Commission and legal services organizations to pursue these cases for low-wage workers. We would encourage the Commission's affirmative litigation unit to also litigate egregious sexual harassment cases in court on behalf of the City of New York. In addition, we would encourage the Commission to allocate additional resources to its mediation program so that where employers are willing to resolve cases, this can be done promptly. While the city human rights law provides some of the broadest protections of any law in the country, it excludes one group of workers, those who work for employers with less than four employees. Thus, an employer with less than four employees can sexually harass their employees without any accountability. The city should not allow this type of discrimination and should eliminate the four-employee requirement for coverage under the human rights law, as many other jurisdictions have done. Further, the city could enact legislation that would require any sexual harassment cases that settle after a complaint is filed to be approved by the court or the Commission. Like unpaid wage cases under the Federal Fair Labor Standards Act, settled cases involving sexual harassment claims should be publicly available. This will increase awareness of potential claims for employees and deter harassment by employers. We thank you for hearing out these suggestions.
Can I just ask a few follow-up questions?
Sure.
One, I'm wondering if the Legal Aid Society, to your knowledge, have you seen any changes in intake in the past few weeks, specifically on sexual harassment?
I don't monitor the, we do have a hotline, which is live and active, where you reach a live person three days a week, and I don't monitor that. You know, we have been seeing more over time, but I wouldn't be able to quote you any statistics at this time, but I can get back to you with that information.
Right. Then I'm also wondering how often Legal Aid Society has to turn people away because of the statutory limit of four employees or more?
I don't know that information, but I can get back to you as well.
Just a quick question. For this client, this person came to you with unemployment insurance issue.
That's right.
How common is it that you have low-wage workers come to you guys for issues like that, and then you find out that there are other?
It's very common. You know, they'll come to us and they say, oh, you know, I need some sort of, you know, monetary assistance to get me through this firing or this layoff, you know, until I find my next job. They come and they, you know, are experiencing difficulties in their application for unemployment insurance, and they're denied. We represent them in a hearing, and many times, you know, we uncover many violations of various employment laws. And it's, you know, our job, we work with them, we educate them, we talk to them about what the law states, what their rights are, and what their options are in pursuing, you know, their claims in court or within a local or state federal agency.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I was just going to ask if you had any further suggestions around retaliation, since it is one of the, you know, biggest obstacles to moving the cases forward.
Right. I mean, we, in the Employment Law Unit, we file and work closely with the State Department of Labor, and they have recently developed this anti-retaliation unit. And the director of the unit, you know, when we bring a complaint to her and we say, this is what's going on, these are the threats that are being made, this is, you know, what's happening in this particular workplace, she will get on the phone, and she will make a phone call to the employer. And she will say, this is what the law is, you know, and if you continue to behave in this way, you know, that would be considered retaliation, and there's consequences to that. And so, I mean, she's been very effective, and I mean, that's something where I think it scares employers, right, to receive a personal phone call from, you know, an agency. And, you know, I think this is something that the Commission could do to step in right away, especially, you know, on behalf of workers who are in the job. You know, you could really make a difference in saving the job, right?
Sorry to keep you up here, and my question's more general to all the people who've spoken so far, but for victims of this, how can we support them as they go through this process? Because it feels to me like that's one of the major barriers, other than financial support, but emotional support, as this is probably a very re-traumatizing process for them to experience.
Yeah, it takes a lot of courage for victims to speak out. You know, they are talking about their personal experiences, and it's hard for them to pursue, you know, their claims publicly. But I think, you know, on the other side of that, you know, victims are often empowered too, you know, knowing that the law is on their side, and they can vindicate their rights. And I think, you know, that's where the enforcement is really important, and that's where civil rights agencies can really stand behind them and show their support.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, Commissioner Malas and members of the Commission on Human Rights. I'm Simone Piro, President of the Board of Directors of New York Women in Film and Television, NIWIFT, and a longtime professional in New York's media and entertainment industry. On behalf of NIWIFT, we greatly appreciate you for today's hearing and appreciate this opportunity to offer testimony. NIWIFT is the preeminent entertainment industry association for women in New York, advocating for equality in the moving image industry and supports women in every stage of their careers. With more than twenty-two hundred members, both women and men, our workforce recognizes women's achievements, presenting professional development and networking programs, and providing grants and scholarships. NIWIFT is part of a network of fifty women in film and chapters worldwide, representing more than ten thousand members. We have been making a positive impact on women's careers for forty years, and our work is now more critical than ever. Although we've been recently shaken by numerous high-profile public declarations of sexual harassment incidents, to NIWIFT and to so many of our members, this type of behavior, while appalling, is anything but breaking news. Such stories of gender-based sexism and harassment have been pervasive and occurring for decades in our industry, no matter what our job, level, or position. Frankly, there's little discrimination when it comes to who can be harassed. For us, sexual harassment is ubiquitous. It happens on film and television location sets, in edit suites, in screening cinemas, at client meetings, in corporate boardrooms, at trade conventions, business social events in an office settings. It can range from a subtle unwelcome overture to the most overt offense. Add in the fact that working in entertainment typically brings long hours and weekends and spending extensive amounts of time with coworkers and crew in sometimes casual and close settings. Plus, our business-bite's nature is people-facing and largely based on interpersonal relationships and power dynamics. It's also highly sought-after employment, where competition is high for a limited amount of jobs. While this industry backdrop may be distinctive, the challenges and concerns around the culture and the reporting system of sexual harassment is not. Many times, if an inappropriate or abusive behavioral incident occurs, there's a longstanding culture of silence in an unsupportive reporting system that significantly deters women from coming forward. Fear of retribution from managers and peers, the loss of job opportunities, and stymied career advancement are powerful deterrents. In addition, women's pay inequality has also led to a culture of women being treated differently on the job, undervalued, and then often sexualized, making harassment a vicious part of the cycle. Therefore, today, we submit three action steps to lead systemic and cultural change and to secure our rights to work in a hostile-free environment. First, acknowledging that a large portion of the production-related workforce throughout the New York tri-state area are employed as freelancers is imperative. These freelancers often work for small-to-mid-size productions and non-corporate work environments. Therefore, we advocate for the development of the fundamentals, written standard operating procedures around sexual harassment that covers all types of crew and staff. These SOPs would include an effective and improved reporting structure, an investigative body, and a much-needed enforcement system. We also propose creating a toolkit of education and treatment resources and an onset sexual harassment policy posting with a resource number. Second, we propose mandatory sexual harassment training for all managers. This prevention and reporting-focused training would be empathetic to those disclosing and take into account psychological, cultural, and social factors that play a very large role in the prevalence of sexual harassment. It would facilitate an open lines of proactive communication among employees and be interactive and relevant to the experience of work in film and television. Third, we propose the creation of a large-scale, city-wide public service announcement campaign that provides a resource, educates, and raises widespread awareness of the issue. As one of the most prominent public voices and advocates for women in New York, NIWIFT would welcome the opportunity to work with the city on the creation and production of PSAs using our vast talent pool of women writers, directors, cinematographers, editors, and so on. Additionally, we recommend the creation of a task force to expand our strategies and solutions, representing a diverse mix of women and men from all media and entertainment-related organizations and companies across the city, perhaps even as part of a committee within a larger state and municipal organization. So in sum, although sexual harassment and discrimination have been a problem from time immemorial, and there's a rightful outrage at the present moment, a seismic shift is occurring on how women, all women, are perceived and treated in our workplaces. Our approach at NIWIFT is to encourage dialogue, provide tools and knowledge, and to foster compassionate, inclusive solutions. So as responsible citizens of New York and representatives of the most influential industry in our culture, we encourage an open, holistic approach and to up-level our discussion around this issue. We welcome the opportunity to work with you and to ensure that all women in media and entertainment work in healthy, equitable, and safe environments. Thank you.
Ms. Piro, can I ask just a few questions?
Sure.
You know, I admit that I am not as familiar with your industry as I am with some other industries, my background is in employment law. I'm not as familiar with film and television. How, you know, prior to kind of this current historical moment, have there been attempts by industry groups to create some method of, I mean, it seems widespread, everything we hear in the media, what we read, it seems so widespread in your industry, and it's been this, it always sounds like this dirty little secret everybody knows about, it's there. Have there been other industry attempts by, you know, not-for-profits in film and television or to create something to address this that have just been kind of, you know, put under the radar or put down? I ask this question just because I personally am not familiar with any history of folks trying to come around in your industry to address this, even though it's so widespread.
Right, right. And what has happened, and I will get back to you with more specifics on organizations, but the television networks, studios, so the large corporations have been addressing it through human resource departments and their policies and procedures. But what we are also seeing is that so much of production happens on smaller, in terms of the freelance environment, and those systems are not in place there. So that's where there's been a disconnect. But then also, even if there are these policies on the But then also, even if there are these policies on larger productions and corporations, this industry has been just rampant with a whisper network. It's the, the fear of retribution is tremendous in the entertainment industry. And whether you, we've had stories of, countless stories of my peers that have reported to their supervisors, and the person that did the harassing was then just moved over to another, another production. And so, we've heard many, many examples of that. And so, that whole cycle hasn't fully been addressed. And this is why we're here today, to really work with you and also say that we'd like to help in this discussion. Anything else? Thank you.
Good evening, thank you for the opportunity to testify today. Thank you, Commissioner Malalas, for your vision and your leadership, and thank you for hosting this event. My name is Martha Camber. I'm the CEO and President of the YWCA Brooklyn, which is the largest and oldest organization serving women and girls in Brooklyn, and the only YWCA represented in the borough. I'm gonna talk specifically today about the impact of sexual harassment on young women and on women in STEM careers. To start, I wanted to say that nothing I'm seeing in public discourse surprises me, and I imagine it probably doesn't surprise most of you either. In almost, my almost four decades as a women's rights advocate, I don't think I've ever seen or met a woman who was not harassed in the workplace. It's just that now famous, affluent white women are coming forward. The hashtag #MeToo, as many of you know, was started more than a decade ago by an African-American woman named Tarana Burke. And while I'm happy it's been revived, let us not forget the millions of nameless women who have suffered in silence. So, for all of us who never walked the red carpet, whose stories were never heard or believed, and who could risk reporting inappropriate behavior for fear of losing their employment, this is our moment too. And thank you, Tarana, she's my Person of the Year. At YWCA Brooklyn, we provide leadership and college-access programming for young women of color. We serve over 300 girls from 40 different high schools throughout the borough, and I can tell you definitively that sexual harassment does not start in the workplace, it starts in school. Our girls are everything you would imagine, smart, confident, savvy, and ambitious. They have bright futures ahead of them, and they know it. But their lives are more difficult, because every day, in school, in the subway, and on the street, they're subjected to humiliating sexual harassment and frequent unwanted touching. Their bodies are analyzed, graded, and critiqued. This daily abuse erodes their confidence, makes them feel ashamed and embarrassed, and ultimately impacts their self-esteem and later choices in life. For more vulnerable girls and those with prior experiences with physical and sexual abuse, this is especially devastating. We live in a culture that normalizes this behavior, which is then internalized by young women and girls. In a 2014 study in Gender in Society, states' objectification, sexual harassment, and abuse appear to be part of the fabric of young women's lives. They have few available, safe places. Girls are harassed and assaulted at parties, in school, on the playground, on buses, and in cars. Overwhelmingly described as normal stuff that guys do, or tolerating what just happens, young women's sexual desire and consent are largely absent. Sex was understood as something done to them. This problem is so pervasive that the YWCA's Brooklyn's Young Women's Social Justice Council recently won a Youth Voice Award for documentary that they're making, working to addressing the over-sexualization of girls and young women. The topic was their choice. Ironically, when I recently met with the Department of Education, officials told me there is no sexual harassment training or curriculum for New York City public school system, which serves over 1 million students. Meanwhile, a recent study of high school students found that 37% of all girls experience sexual harassment in school. This doesn't change once young women get to college either. In fact, 1 in 4 women will be sexually assaulted while in college. It's worse for women studying in STEM fields, which are more traditionally dominated by men. A 2014 survey found that 26% of women conducting scientific field research had been sexually assaulted. In academic field experiences, harassment and assault were commonly experienced by women respondents during trainee career stages. Women trainees were the primary targets of harassment or assault. Their perpetrators were predominantly senior to them, and professionally within the research team. A 2017 article in American Scientist states, "A slew of scandals and lawsuits over the past several years have demonstrated that scientists are guilty of sexual harassment, have repeatedly been allowed to continue their careers, enabling them to find new victims." But focusing on headline-making cases may avert attention from the underlying issues, institutional intolerance for the patterns of behavior, legal or illegal, that create an unwelcoming environment for women, and underrepresented minorities, and an incentive structure in academic science that resists changing this atmosphere. And we wonder why there aren't more women in STEM careers. Young women are often targeted for harassment specifically because they're more vulnerable, and the impact this can have on their career trajectory is devastating. 2017 study indicates that harassment experienced by young women knocks many off course during these formative career stages. Sexual harassment plays a prominent role in shaping early career trajectories for women, and because victims of sexual harassment feel uncomfortable and unsafe in workplaces, sexual harassment often acts as a push factor for women to leave their jobs. Exiting harassing workplace, especially early on in a woman's career, can have a significant impact on her ability for advancement, as she may experience gaps in employment, or subsequently be unable to find comparable work. Even more detrimental to a woman's career opportunities than a lapse in work is the loss of access to professional networks and the sacrificing of firm-specific tenure. In closing, this is an unprecedented watershed moment for women in this country, but I have to say that I'm alarmed that the discourse in the media, and in the press, in Hollywood, and even in Congress is focusing on the men who have perpetuated this violence. I'm not interested in discussing gradations of abuse, or which forms of harassment are worse, or what level of punishment is appropriate. What I want to talk about is how we're going to change a culture that allows and even encourages abusive behavior by men in power. A culture that is so pervasive, it conditions, it starts conditioning, boys and girls from a very young age. A culture that wastes the human potential of half of the citizens of this country. Thank you.
I have a question. Wait, I wanted to ask a question before you leave. Thank you for bringing the young girls and women into the space. I think it's really important. And I was really struck by what you said at the beginning about how, you know, thinking about how young women who are first entering into the workforce have already normalized, in some cases, a decade of harassment. And I'm curious what you've seen, or if you're seeing anything in the why that is helping to empower young women and girls to speak out, that will help them later on when they get into the workplace?
We think about it a lot, because, you know, they're going off to college, and they're not going to be at the YWCA every day anymore, right? And so, they have to be well-equipped to handle this kind of, or even know that this may be coming. I think that it's really important to start telling a different story, so this isn't normative, right? It's not the way it's supposed to be, and it's not just boys will be boys. I think that having safe places where girls can congregate with other girls, and having this conversation, actually, the commissioner came to speak to our girls, and they were very interested in how she got to where she is and what her story was. We do a lot of bringing women of color in to talk to the girls about their own experiences, which are very similar to those that our girls are having now. And I, and now we're really trying to do an alumni, you know, even if it's like some thing like FaceTiming, so that as the girls go away to college, we're able to keep them connected and continue to talk about these issues. But to be quite honest, we really provide the platform, and the girls do the rest. And they've been doing these speak-outs with their friends that we're not even involved in. They organize it, 60 kids come, they talk about, you know, how they're feeling about what's going, they talk about Trump, they talk about what's going on in the country. And I feel like providing that platform is very important, it really is. And also, just providing a different narrative. Yeah. Yes, yeah.
Do you have any specific recommendations or ideas for what the city can do to get to these young women, right? So, not just enforce the law, but actually arm these women with the tools they need to change that narrative?
I have to say that I'm kind of stunned at how pervasive it is. I taught high school in New York City one year, and I had like an all-girls health class, and it was one of those high schools that was like a last-stop high school for girl, for students who had dropped out of other schools. And I expected my students to be really challenged academically, and they weren't. And when I talked to them, I said, why did you drop, you're a great student, why did you drop out? They had, 100% of those girls had been sexually harassed. They were the first in their class to develop breasts, or to develop. There were, you know, constant torment and bullying, and it was a lot of body image stuff. So, I think in terms of the city, you know, I think that, I think it's much more pervasive than we realize. It's on the street, it's in the subways, it's in schools. I think it's really important, first, to just let people know this is not okay, and that there are places that you can report this kind of behavior. School is a problem, high school is a problem. Yeah, I don't know what we can do about that, but if there's a way to work, it's Department of Education, I think that's important. Public transportation is a problem. Yeah, so, I'm sorry that I don't have better suggestions. Any other? Yeah, did you have a question? No?
I just had one question. I mean, this is one agency, but it does seem like multiple agencies may need to grapple with this.
Yes.
If you were to, just for the record, what would be your opinion that the first steps that the DOE should be taking?
I was really surprised to hear that they don't do any training with teachers and students around sexual harassment. So, that would be where I would start. You know, we have to teach girls that this is wrong at a young age, and we have to teach them to fight back, and we have to teach boys at a young age to respect girls and women. And that's really where it starts. I think education is the key, and I think starting young.
Well, actually, I do have a question.
Yes.
Since you taught, and maybe there are other teachers here, think about this. Do you consider, would you have been a safe person that these girls could have come to?
Absolutely, yeah.
I mean, I think, I wonder if there's some way to make a public ally. One of the other speakers mentioned a bystander program, and I think that there's some value in making us all responsible for this.
I love that idea, is having safe, safe people to come to. I was surprised at how, you know, we brought in, we started our program with just a couple of girls, and they started bringing their friends, and they started bringing their friends, and soon there were 300 girls there. They're really hungry for a safe place that's girl-focused, where they can explore these issues with each other and with trusted adults, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for your testimony so far. I just, I'm Dana Sussman, Deputy Commissioner at the Commission. I just want to remind folks that we do have, unfortunately, a three-minute limit on testimony, and many folks lined up to testify. So, I appreciate your attention to the time limit, and apologize that we are running a little bit behind. Thank you.
Well, first, I'd like to say thank you to the New York City Commission on Human Rights for creating this space for us to address this very pressing topic. The recent headlines have made it abundantly clear that no industry is immune to sexual harassment. But it can be especially pervasive in the male-dominated or traditionally male environments. My name is Leah Rambo, and my testimony today is based on my 29 years of experience of working within the construction industry. Currently, I am a Training Director for one of the building trades in New York City. And to many, it may seem like this is a new epidemic, because we're hearing so much about it in the news, but for women who work in my industry, this is not new at all. There was a very similar hearing to this that I spoke at about 25 years ago at City Hall. And unfortunately, not a whole lot has changed. Today, I'm going to speak to you from my 29 years of experience just within my industry. I've been subjected to rumors of sexual exploits, rumors of sexual orientation. I've been grabbed, kissed, slapped on the butt, subjected to lewd and vulgar remarks around me, towards me, and simply cannot account the amount of unwanted sexual advances. And these might be considered to be mild for many in my industry, because there certainly have been women that I know of personally that have been raped within the industry, and even one of my sisters, a carpenter, Audi Hicks, who paid the ultimate price when she was killed on the job by one of her male coworkers. So, the real question here is not, does it happen? We know it does, but how do we stop it? And I think one of the ways that we stop it is to start with training, and comprehensive policies and guidelines on how to prevent sexual harassment, how to report it when it happens. And it's imperative that the education happens at every construction site, and during every phase of the, of the construction project. Training must include anti-bullying, respectful and professional work environments, inclusive work sites, safety is a prime concern for construction industries. Sexual harassment should be considered as a safety hazard. A recent study out of the British of Columbia showed that the majority of construction-site accidents was certainly, was shortly perceived by sexual harassment in some form occurred right before the accident. One of the byproducts of sexual harassment is impaired concentration. While in my field, when you're working with power tools, heavy equipment, or when you work on a ladder, scaffold on the edge of the building, then it now becomes a matter of life or death. Jobs are required to have safety churning, OSHA cards, you cannot walk on a job without it, it shows you have a minimum amount of training, 10 hours or 4 hours in scaffolding. And the same type of diligence should be considered towards the topic of sexual harassment. It should be required that all workers receive this type of training, anti-harassment, anti-bullying. And because it's so pervasive in industries where it's male-dominated, it's also very important that the government's able to dedicate funds to increase the number of women in industries like mine, where it's very male-dominated. In our industry, it's based on money, people respect fines, just like OSHA's fine, the same thing should happen in the case of sexual harassment. Thank you again for giving us this opportunity.
Hello, my name is Karen Dett Castro, and I am a union carpenter, a member of the United Brotherhood of Carpenters. While it's not easy to be a woman in a male-dominated field, I've been experiencing sexual harassment in the workplace since the time I got my first job at the age of 13, nearly 30 years ago. My first job was working in a supermarket, where a manager would send me to the stockroom in the basement and then follow me. Multiple times, he tried to kiss me, and finally, I let him for fear of losing my job. He said if I was nice to him, I could be assistant manager within a year. I remember being confused and naively flattered. Years later, thinking back to that time, I realized how predatory his behavior was as a 32-year-old trying to seduce a 13-year-old, and that was just my first job. There was the owner of a grocery store, and later, his son. There was the owner of a roofing company, and his partner, the VP of a prominent New York City real estate company, who promised to turn my temp job permanent if I met him at a hotel across the street, et cetera, et cetera. I am embarrassed to admit that in the early days, I was flattered to think that these men were attracted to me, older, powerful men, and it is almost exclusively men in a power of position. When I became a tradeswoman, I wondered how long it would take to be harassed by someone on the field, and it took on the field, and it took less than a week. It was demoralizing and disheartening, and I wondered how a first-year apprentice on her first job can navigate these waters without being labeled one of those. And while I did take a stand that yet another tradesman who propositioned me, that was just my first job site. With harassment now in the spotlight, I usually hear men saying, "Now I'm afraid to say anything to women." And I usually ask if it's really that hard to not say anything inappropriate to or around women, or whether they'd be okay with it being said to their wife, mother, or daughter. So far, this has been met with silence or with an under-the-breath grumble. About a year ago, I had an open, honest, and very personal discussion to someone who works in my industry about seemingly harmless dick jokes. Pardon my language. I told him that it's not that women can't handle adult jokes, it's just that so many women have had to endure not only harassment, but innuendo and jokes for so many years that, quite frankly, we are tired about hearing and/or thinking about your dicks. Again, pardon my language. Recently, in light of what's in the news, he and I revisited the topic, and he claimed that he now understands what I was talking about. Though last week, I heard him make reference to his member in front of me and to another tradeswoman. I shot him a look, and he apologized. Angerly, I told him, "You just couldn't friggin' help yourself, could you? I guess you understood what I told you, but you didn't care." He sheepishly apologized and walked away. We obviously all have a long way to go with this struggle, and I can only hope that we can keep this discussion in the forefront long enough to invoke real long-term change. Thank you for your time.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you again for sharing your story.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Did you, at any of the jobs that you held, were you experienced harassment? Did you ever feel like there was someone you could go to, like, within the company?
No. No. Thank you.
So I...
Yes.
So your role, your job...
Yes.
As a union carpenter. How precarious is that job? In other words, how much are you in favor of your supervisors?
For me personally, I don't think, I haven't personally felt like my job was threatened or that I needed to do something to keep my job, although I did feel like I needed to keep my mouth shut as far as any instances in order to not be labeled as something. Yeah. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jeff Draxler, and I'm Associate Director of the Fashion Law Institute. And I want to thank the Commission, both for myself and on behalf of our founder, Professor Susan Scafidi, who is also here today. This is an incredibly important issue. We have a clinic that offers free legal advice to everyone in the fashion industry. And I can tell you that this is a concern that affects everyone, from designers, models, people and other people, service personnel throughout the industry. It is truly a universal concern. And to understand why, I think it would help for a minute to sort of maybe step out of this hearing and imagine that you're at a fashion show. And I know fashion's very glamorous, a very glamorous industry, but I want you to look through the lights and think about the people. So backstage, you'll have makeup artists and hairstylists. You'll have freelance designers who are helping with the clothes and design assistants. You go out front, and you'll see the designer, you'll see models walking the runway. But you also see tradespeople putting together the stage and the whole event. You'll have journalists, photographers, you'll even have a DJ, videographers, even lawyers out there, all of whom are exposed to harassment. But not all of whom are confident that they have any recourse if something should happen. So for example, a designer typically is going to be employed. So they have a certain degree of security protection under state law. But they're thinking, if it's a small business, and there's a lot of small businesses in fashion, what about federal law? What about city with the four employee threshold? So they're concerned there. A lot of the other people are going to be freelancers. And they, if they've heard that there's a certain degree of protection under New York City, under New York City's human rights law, they're uncertain what kind of protection are they attached to? Are they attached to a business? What kind of freelance, what kind of independent contractor are there? What's their recourse? There's a lot of confusion, there's a lot of uncertainty, and you are in a position to change that by, once and for all, establishing that civil rights are for everybody, that equal protection is for all, that our rights come not from who hires us, but from who we are. And by establishing protection for all independent contractors, for all employees, for all professions, for all industries, you'll provide a level of security that we just simply do not have. And it's important, there are a couple things I want to add. One, I think it's important to do this for everybody, not select professions, not select industries. Differential treatment is a dangerous prospect because it can exacerbate confusion. And also, you have the risk, particularly when focusing on things that are people who are more famous or get more attention, of privileging sort of areas of an industry that are largely white. And it can create some imbalances that can be very problematic. Two other things I want to mention. One, the fashion industry already does a fair amount of work to have equal treatment. And another thing they do is they have auditing procedures. But even, and some procedures include sexual harassment. This can be effective across the board, across industries, across professions, as a means, as an incentive to follow the law. So if we can have some sort of enforcement, some sort of mandatory reporting mechanism put in place, maintain the complainant's privacy. But how many complaints do you receive? How are they disposed? Are you paying settlements? Are the complainants still with you? What happened to the harasser? That's sort of basic information. We don't recommend, great, I'll do just two more points. I don't recommend banning NDAs, which I know, non-disclosure agreements, which I know a lot of people have suggested, because for a number of people, there's still this concern about stigma, which we've talked a lot about today, stigma and negative career consequences. And that's the last thing we want to focus, I want to mention to you all. The more you can do to prevent retaliation, the more you can do to prevent people not being able to be hired, because there's this fear that once they report, they will never be in fashion again. That will be great for our industry. It's important for you, whatever you can do to reduce stigma, to reduce negative career consequences, and also to encourage employers to hashtag "hire a troublemaker." So thank you so very much for this session tonight.
Just a quick question.
Yeah.
So the mandatory reporting mechanism would be something city law required?
Yeah, I think city law should do it, because one of the things that I think I've come to appreciate in all the years of working with the fashion industry, New York City is a fashion capital of the world, is one of the global fashion capitals. And fashion companies pay attention to what you do here. So what you, the amendments that you put in place, they will be paying attention, not just for what they do in the city, but throughout the country and indeed throughout the entire world. So, for example, mandatory reporting standards definitely should be part of the city, the human rights law. Think of it, what you do, like nonprofits have to have certain mandatory public reporting. Publicly traded companies have to have certain required reporting. There are standards like the HIGG Index and some other things within fashion where you actually have to audit for these questions and account for them. It goes into sort of the score that you get. If we can do that for every business, every nonprofit, it would make a difference, because then you can't hide it anymore. Then people know what you're doing.
I have a follow-up question on that. We've done, our organizations have done some work in low-wage workplaces, and unfortunately, what we find is the more abusive the environment, the fewer cases get reported. Right? So it could be a sort of what you call a false negative instead of false positive.
But right now, we have...
Any thoughts on that? You know, the more repressive the environment, the less you're actually going to have anything to report. Any thoughts on that challenge?
One thing, fashion has been working in this, in labor reform for decades. What people, there's a big spotlight on us, there've been some major incidents, factory fires, going back to Triangle. And what we found is that the more we put in place norms of auditing and reporting, the more people are going to speak up. And one of the speakers mentioned hotlines. I know a number of actual companies throughout the city have put in hotlines where workers can do reporting. And once those are in place, there is an uptick. So I think once you establish it as a norm, as a public social norm, or public, you know, legal norm, that this reporting exists, there are mechanisms for doing it, people are paying attention to it, that will encourage people to speak up.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
My name is Sarah Ziff, and I'm the Founder and Executive Director of the Model Alliance, a labor advocacy organization in the fashion industry. Too often, models are treated as objects and not as legitimate members of the workforce who deserve to be able to work with the same dignity, respect, and basic legal protections other workers enjoy under New York's sexual harassment and employment laws. As a model who started working at 14 years old, I have had a good career. That said, my peers and I have experienced inappropriate demands, including routinely being put on the spot to pose nude and provide sexual favors. In some cases, models are being treated more like escorts, with their agencies sending them to known predators and putting them in compromising situations that no child, no person should have to deal with. Essentially, all working models operate under fixed-term exclusive contracts to their agencies, who exert a great deal of control over their working lives. The agencies then contract with a client, a brand, a magazine, and the like, for the models' work. Because the primary purpose and activity of the modeling agencies is to obtain this employment for their models, they should be treated as employment agencies under New York State law, which would subject them to necessary licensing and regulation. Instead, though, these agencies call themselves management companies, creating a huge loophole through which they evade this closer look by the government. Further, modeling agencies in New York argue that models are independent contractors, not employees. Under current federal and New York State law, independent contractors are not afforded the same protection from sexual harassment in the workplace as employees. Although New York City law protects independent contractors against sexual harassment, because of the multi-level structure of hiring in the modeling industry, we're concerned that the city law generally does not apply to models either. When a company directly hires an independent contractor, the company can be sued for violating the human rights law. However, when a client contracts with a modeling agency to hire the model, and the modeling agency sends the model to the client, we're worried that the multi-level contracting will bar the model from bringing a claim against the company. There has, for too long, been a history of institutional acceptance, or at a minimum, recklessly ignoring sexual harassment by both agencies and clients. Models should have the same recourse as employees to sue employers. She should have a direct mechanism for making complaints, and should be assured that courts are willing and able to hold the agency and the client, her joint employers, responsible for the abuses she suffered. Regardless of how a model is classified, it is imperative to maintain a safe and fair working environment, especially considering most of these girls are just children. The modeling industry deserves a closer look from government regulators. The perceived glamour of the industry and gaps in the law should no longer be used to deny models a safe workplace or appropriate recourse if abuse occurs. We deserve no less than any other segment of New York City's workforce. Thanks.
Hi, thank you so much for having me. I'm just going to take you through some instances where I've been harassed. My name is Lauren Switzer, and I've worked as a model in New York for the last six years. I would like to share two accounts of abuse that I experienced firsthand. Recently, I booked a runway show for a famous French fashion designer in New York, along with 30 other models, both men and women, who are mostly teenagers. The head of our agency, a woman, was present as well. The client had us stand in a semicircle, then ordered us to strip. We all looked at each other, confused by her request. She said it again, "Strip." Our agent affirmed her request and said, "Everyone, get in your underwear." As an older, more experienced model, my heart broke for the young girls in the room, and they might think that this is normal. I was embarrassed and confused. With all the males present, including the male translator, the models proceeded to take off their clothes. I was shocked and in disbelief. Once we were stripped down, she sized up the girls' bodies and commented on their problem areas in front of everyone. She went around the room, pointing at the bigger-breasted women and tapped their butts, saying, "Too big, not professional." The young girls started developing tears in their eyes. I was angry, but tried my best to remain calm and professional. Agents are meant to have our best interests at heart, but in this case, my agent was complicit, an enabling abusive behavior, even demanding that we comply. At another recent incident, during a shoot, a male photographer would drop inappropriate suggestive comments. While I was wearing a choker necklace, he said, "God, there is something to be said about something tied around a woman's neck." He would also say, "You have the sexiest legs I've ever seen." He moaned in a sexual way every time he took a photo. I felt gross and unsafe. My fear of offending anyone was greater than the urge to defend myself in the moment. The stylist then brought out a sheer top. When I politely explained that I wasn't comfortable wearing a C3-through top, both the male stylist and photographer said I should be okay with showing my body, and that I was ruining the Chanel. Giving into pressure on set to do any kind of nudity, be it implied or fully nude, left me feeling helpless and exposed. The photographer then asked for my number while we were still on set, a decline which led to an uncomfortable tension for the rest of the shoot. I returned home feeling ashamed and fooled. I had expected to be safe and protected, and I was trying to be professional and do the job. Having to dodge unwanted sexually charged comments or requests are routine in the modeling industry. Modeling is demanding and requires my full attention. Having to protect myself from harassment is exhausting and should not be part of my job. Most models are not treated with basic decency and respect, because we are often seen as bodies. We should have laws and regulations in place protecting our rights. The perpetrators of the sexual harassment and mistreatment are not punished, because there are no clear rules or regulations set in place regarding sexual harassment. It would be helpful to have models and agents sign contracts before the job explicitly agreeing to anything involving nudity or any kind of sexual touching beforehand, so that they don't feel pressured to spontaneous demands that make them uncomfortable and feel powerless. Fortunately, we have the Model Alliance, but there should be a human resources department where that can prevent this abuse from happening in the first place, where we can report any misconduct that takes place. Our agencies are supposed to be safe havens, but in my experience, reporting harassment to them has done nothing, and only led to tension between myself and the agency. The modeling industry, if you think about it, is a breeding ground for abuse and sexual harassment. You have young girls, you have foreign girls, you have girls that their visas are held by their agencies, and then you have big, high-powered people. There needs to be a place where we can go safely and complain about this stuff. And these people need to be held at the same, in the same regard, in the same way punished as any other workforce. For some reason, the glamour of modeling gets in the way of anything when it comes to that. There should be a place established where models can voice their concerns and questions. Many models get harassed and assaulted and have nowhere to go to talk about their traumatizing experience. Thanks for listening.
I have one question. This could be for you or for Sarah. I was curious, thank you for sharing. I was curious about, we've mainly been talking about women, but men in the modeling industry as well, and what you're seeing with men.
Yeah, well, in my experience, and we'll let Sarah go too, I dated a male model, and he was proposed to do sexual favors for a very, very prominent designer. And the designer offered him, you know, a lifetime of success, career, all this stuff. And when he didn't take it, he was, he doesn't have a career anymore. So that's just me.
And I would just add, thank you for that question. So for the last six years, I've run grievance reporting service at the Model Alliance, all on a volunteer basis, by the way. And I hear from just as many men as women, not just models, you know, photo assistants and the like, who I think will be coming forward shortly with allegations against prominent people in the industry. But yeah, it's, I think in some ways, the men have it harder, because there's a stigma when it's, you know, the abuse is coming from other men. Okay.
Thank you. And I just want to thank you and everyone here who has spoken from their personal experiences so far. It's very powerful and very difficult, and I really appreciate it. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Maya Ragoo, and I am the Director of Workplace Equality at the National Women's Law Center in Washington, DC. Thank you for holding this...
Good evening. My name is Maya Ragoo, and I am the Director of Workplace Equality at the National Women's Law Center in Washington, DC. Thank you for holding this important hearing and for the opportunity to submit testimony. In this critical moment of national reckoning, we need to ensure that we move beyond just responding to sexual harassment, to rethinking our laws and our systems and our culture to ensure prevention through real, long-lasting change. As a national legal organization that has worked for 45 years to advance women's equality, we've been considering various policy initiatives to help create that change around sexual harassment. I want to highlight some of them here, and there are further details in my written testimony. But these initiatives would allow victims to hold individual harassers accountable, to promote greater transparency regarding the extent of harassment at a workplace, and encourage prevention practices. The Human Rights Law, even to people without an ownership interest or supervisory authority who are not company officers, would help ensure that meaningful remedies are available to victims who have experienced sexual harassment. Several states already permit victims to do this, under their state anti-discrimination laws, and in fact, California made this change via statute instead of by court decision. There's also much the Commission could do to improve transparency regarding the extent of harassment at a company. And here, I want to echo an earlier speaker, and say the Commission should consider making publicly available the type and number of discrimination charges filed against a company, whether the charges were dismissed or resolved, and some information about the nature of the resolution, such as if it was settled for a monetary amount. Such information could be made available on the Commission's website, so that members of the public could conduct searches by company name. Because what we see is that individuals often accept employment with a company without knowing if discrimination and harassment are particular problems in that workplace. And once employed, they're often forbidden by employment agreements from discussing issues, which really create incredible barriers to coming forward and report. So, the city could also pilot a transparency initiative requiring contractors, prospective or current, to report regularly on the type and number of discrimination complaints or lawsuits, and how they were resolved. And there was a similar affair at the federal level, which unfortunately has now been rolled back. But the city law could also prohibit the use of non-disclosure and other secrecy clauses in employment contracts. So, even though it's forbidden by federal law to prohibit employees from discussing employment conditions, including harassment, those are often part of employment contracts, or forced arbitration clauses, or non-disparagement clauses, or requiring employees to waive their right to discuss or report violations of civil rights laws. So, policy initiatives that prohibit these restrictions could really lift the veil of secrecy that helps hide predatory behavior, and really encourage employers to engage in preventative practices. And that is my last point. To go to Chairman Malalas's opening remarks, you mentioned that businesses have been asking you about how they could do better. Well, preventing sexual harassment before it occurs should be a priority for any employer in the public or private sector. And in New York State, employees working for all executive branch agencies must participate in training on sexual harassment. And some states have gone further and extended that into the private sector for government contractors. So, the city could institute similar mandatory training requirements for businesses operating in New York City. Or, in the alternative, and at a minimum, they should require that all city employees and employees of city contractors receive sexual harassment training. And finally, the Commission should develop guidelines and promising practices for employers to follow in developing and implementing trainings and effective policies and other prevention practices, because there's a real dearth of information right now, and we, and I know others, are getting calls from all kinds of employers, including nonprofits, who want to do better but don't have the tools to do that. And someone else mentioned the EEOC Task Force Report from last year, and I would just recommend that to you, because it has many excellent recommendations about training and prevention practices that employers can use. So, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dina Baxte. I'm co-founder and co-president of A Better Balance, and thank you so much for convening this important hearing. And to Commissioner Malalas, under your leadership, the Commission has shown extraordinary dedication to enforcing the city human rights law, and we are so grateful for your leadership. A Better Balance was founded with a goal of promoting fairness in the workplace, ensuring that women and mothers can earn the fair and equal wages they deserve. We've been proud to work alongside you to advance many of the pioneering solutions to these issues, from the City Pregnant Workers Fairness Act, to the City Caregiver Law, to more recently, the City Salary History Ban Law. I just wanted to offer a few, I want to talk about the devastating consequences sexual harassment can have, particularly on low-wage women, and we've heard a lot of it in very powerful form already. But at ABB, we hear every day on our free legal hotline from women, low-income women, about harassment and discrimination. And women like our client, Luisa, who worked in the kitchen in a supermarket in New York City, making $10 an hour. And one of her supervisors repeatedly touched and groped her, but she never reported it, because she was afraid she would lose her job if she told anyone. Then, when Luisa became pregnant, she asked her supervisors to stop touching her, because she did not want him to harm her baby. After that, he began to constantly ridicule her for being pregnant, and weeks later, Luisa was fired after she requested one day off to attend a prenatal appointment. Luisa's story demonstrates the multiple interconnected forms of harassment low-income women face on the job every day, and the impossible choices they are forced to make in order to earn a paycheck. We know Luisa's not alone. This is widespread in all of these industries that we've heard from, as well, you know, domestic workers, restaurant workers, who are forced to rely on tip wages, tips, in order to make a minimum wage. And in construction industry, we've heard startling 88% of women working in construction experience sexual harassment in the workplace, a factor that contributes to women's low workforce participation, just 2.6% nationally. So, a few key recommendations that have not already been mentioned. Businesses who receive are city and state's hard-earned tax dollars, should not sexually harass or otherwise discriminate against women, but we know they do. For example, women who leave construction site, which we've just heard cite harassment as a key reason. Yet billions of dollars' worth of New York City and state contracts go to construction services. Now, you can and must do better to onboard and retain women in these higher-paying jobs. And step one, New York should strengthen contractor non-discrimination requirements by explicitly requiring anti-harassment and sex discrimination provisions, including training requirements in state and city contracts. Moreover, the state or city should be permitted to terminate the contract and to borrow the employer from future public contracting opportunities if the contractor has been found to be in violation. There are models from other industries and communities, like the LGBT community, and I think that we should really, you know, use this contracting reporting tool to really, get at harassment and sex discrimination more broadly. Again, as my colleagues have talked about, expanding the city human rights law to cover domestic workers, proactively investigating industries with rampant sexual harassment, fast-tracking sexual harassment complaints, and working with the city council to develop new policies to protect vulnerable employees, really looking to strengthen strong anti-retaliation provisions. And I do think there could be some industry-specific work to be done, like, for example, housekeepers. 49% of housekeepers surveyed in a recent Chicago survey said that guests had exposed them, flashed them, and answered the door naked. And so, you know, and Chicago responded to this by passing an ordinance that required hotel workers to provide a panic button to any worker who works alone in rooms with other employees present. But it also required policies encourage reporting to sexual harassment, making procedures clear. And this is interesting, allowing workers to immediately stop working in dangerous studies and to be reassigned to a different work area. We need to rethink what retaliation means, and affirmatively prevent and secure the safety of working women. And just strengthening sexual harassment training for employees, ensuring that independent contractors are aware of their rights. Employers, you know, again, as my colleague Maya pointed out, you know, in California, employers are required to provide two hours of mandatory sexual harassment training to supervisors within six months, and at least every two years. And the training must be interactive. It's not just like cookie cutter training. And include the remedies that are available to victims, and must include practical examples. We have a strong remedy here in the city commission, and workers need to know, and employers need to know, what those remedies are. I will conclude there. Thank you so much.
Good evening. My name is Alana Kaufman, and I'm an attorney at Emory, Chely, Brinker, Hoff &amp; Abody, a civil rights firm in Manhattan. A significant portion of my practice involves sexual harassment and gender discrimination in the workplace. Recently, the media has shed significant light on sexual harassment by high-profile individuals, men with money and fame and influence. But as we've heard so many times this evening, sexual harassment is not perpetuated only by people with means. Power is relative. Just as Harvey Weinstein had power over actresses and women working in Hollywood, male supervisors in other industries have power over the women they work with every day and whose livelihoods they control. Last month, my law firm filed a sexual harassment and gender discrimination complaint by a woman named Ladonna Powell, who worked for several years as a security guard for a major security company at JFK Airport. Her experience there is harrowing. As the complaint describes, Ladonna's supervisors repeatedly propositioned her for sex in exchange for better promotions and shifts. She was told that back in the day, she would be, quote, "bent over" in the security booths. She was shown videos of women pole dancing and asked if she knew how to dance like that. She was even shown videos of her supervisors engaging in sex acts with other female employees. The message could not have been more explicit: Have sex with supervisors and get ahead, or refuse and be retaliated against. Ladonna chose the latter. Instead of acquiescing to her supervisor's demands, she reported them to senior management and human resources. In response, her hours were cut, and she was isolated, demeaned, and ultimately terminated. What happened to Ladonna is the same thing that happens to countless women every day in industries that are not bathed in media light. Male supervisors had the authority to control her career trajectory, her schedule, and her livelihood, and they tried to exploit that power for sex. Since Ladonna's complaint was filed, numerous other women from that same security company have contacted our law firm with similar stories about what happened to them. Many said that harassment by the same individual supervisors had been going on for years, and nothing had changed because the woman who spoke up were fired or forced to resign. It brings us to the question, what can be done? Many things. First, I urge the Commission to publicly state that women may file complaints with the Commission and receive individual damages, even in instances where an arbitration agreement may prevent them from filing in court. This sends the message to women and employers alike that sexual misconduct will not be shielded from the public view. Second, I urge the Commission to issue damages awards that are commensurate with awards that women would receive if they brought their claims to court. This sends the message that the Commission is serious about this issue, and it creates a strong deterrent for would-be harassers and their employers. There must be financial motivation for companies to stop harassment before it takes place. Finally, we have to keep talking about this important issue. As I've learned from my experience representing Ladonna, the more we talk about sexual harassment, as she tells me, the more women will feel safe coming forward. I applaud the Commission for holding this hearing and for its work on gender-based harassment in the workplace to date. Let's continue to make progress for Ladonna, who is here today, and I thank her for letting me share her story, and for women like her across New York City. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here tonight. My name is Marissa Centino, and I am the Enforcement Program Manager for the National Domestic Workers Alliance. NDWA leads several campaigns and coalitions to advance the rights of domestic workers by advocating for increased labor protections, racial justice, gender equity, and humane immigration policies. And the New York Bill of Rights includes domestic worker protections against harassment and discrimination by changing the previous law protecting workers in places of employment from four or more to one or more employees. Currently, for discrimination, it still lies at four or more, but we are protected under sexual harassment protections. It's key, since previously, like most domestic workers, did all work in a one employer, one employee situation. So, in the past three years, NDWA has worked with our local affiliates to explore the following strategies in pursuit of a more worker-led, community-supported enforcement process. We prioritize leadership development amongst domestic workers that prepares and utilizes them as key actors in supporting peers through enforcement processes. We work collaboratively with government agencies who share values and vision alignment, and to explore how to leverage our collective resources and mechanisms to increase our capacity to bolster enforcement as a system, and not just in an instance. And in turn, we strive to establish community-based organizations that work with domestic workers and employers who are essential to government enforcement processes. Organizations provide invaluable expertise and skills, and there is a formal role for us beyond outreach and joining government-led efforts. They're often the first and most complete support that a worker is able to encounter when coming forward with egregious violations, such as sexual harassment. And our affiliate organizations need the best support possible to provide the best care for domestic workers in order to move forward with their claims and support their needs while mitigating negative consequences as a result of filing cases. We've had successes in collaborating with, for example, the city's Division of Paid Care to produce citywide domestic worker convenings. And it's an example of places where we can continue these collaborations to help domestic workers understand what their rights are under domestic worker law and anti-sexual harassment Even with these strategies in place and continued collaboration with city-state community-based organizations, we're seeing that it still takes a very long time for workers to know whom to turn to and whom to trust. Domestic workers have a very hard time admitting that their workplace rights have been violated. They have an even harder time sharing accounts of sexual harassment, but continue living with the trauma and fear every day of their past experiences. We're committed to complete screening of potential workplace violations that include sexual harassment violations in the workplace. It's not enough for us to wait for a worker to come forward when we can be in the practice of asking in a culturally sensitive and supportive way potential harassment violations. We're finding that when some workers have decided to come forward, they do so in relation to a different complaint of a workplace situation. They use a lesser offense to test the waters of how well they can trust our support and our process. So, for domestic workers, it's almost never only a sexual harassment claim, it's the insult that was added to injury. Unfortunately, while a worker has several years, in six years in New York State, to file a wage theft complaint, the statute of limitations runs out much sooner for a sexual harassment claim. So, one year is barely enough for a worker to build the stamina, support, and understanding of their rights to come forward. And at that time, the time that is required to distance themselves from a job that can very well affect her ability to find another job, because of the culture of reference checking in domestic work. This includes the threat of retaliation, threats to immigration status, and threats to personal safety. And we have workers who come forward several years after the fact. This needs to change. So, domestic workers work under hyper vigilance, and they know that every step they make is being surveilled. Many workers are afraid to make phone calls to any agency, because they have a fear of being recorded on the job. Others are held accountable for every action they make, and have very little personal time to make phone calls and seek information, or visit a city agency, or any organization seeking help. So, there are ways that the city and state agencies can be more accessible to domestic workers who work long hours and odd schedules. The thought of taking time from work is paralyzing, and in the eyes of a worker, and is in the eyes of the employer, is a punishable offense. So, now is the time to act towards a more aggressive enforcement of domestic worker rights to prevent sexual harassment in the workplace. And as an organization representing thousands of domestic workers in New York City, we know firsthand how important it is to listen to the voices of sexual assault, especially in the national conversation around sexual harassment. We know that the barriers to stopping workers coming forward really are around their lack of knowledge of their rights. Many employers do not consider their home as a workplace, and thus aren't aware of their obligations under the law. And when domestic workers do know their rights, their next challenge is getting them to file a complaint with the appropriate enforcement agency in a timely manner, in order to meet the statute of limitations. We also know that there needs to be an ease of access to seek information, support, and support to file claims. support to file claims for—with domestic workers who have little or no free time. In addition, domestic workers face a myriad of barriers that often dissuade them from filing altogether and enforcing their rights, such as retaliation due to immigration status or fear of losing a job or a home if they happen to be a live-in worker. And once they file, the next challenge is navigating the adversarial process required by the administrative agencies charged with enforcing their protections. So as some solutions—or policy solutions to remedy these barriers, we would like to ask the administrative advocacy staff and the city and state enforcement agencies charged with enforcing anti-discriminatory and harassment laws to be trained in investigating and adjudicating domestic worker cases in particular, including alternative investigatory strategies that minimize or curb retaliation. For example, agencies can interview or conduct mediations via phone in order to protect workers from retaliation. Funding for legal aid and advocacy organizations, including the expansion of enforcement by local and state, federal agencies that should partner with community organizations, worker centers, to identify cases. And we often are the ones that are doing the preliminary investigation and are helping workers to file the claims in the first place. Worker leaders in worker centers should be seen as an equal partner with enforcement agencies in investigating claims and providing worker support throughout the process. City funds could be allocated for social and housing services that must be provided for domestic workers to mitigate the negative consequences of filing claims. And I personally think that there also should be funding to help address like the mental trauma that comes with having to file a claim and having had experienced sexual harassment. And that is all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. We’re gonna take a quick three-minute bathroom break for folks, so please, go ahead.
And he was just very in the face of his eyes, imagining what has been.
And Trump, for a time away from home, Trump has given the racism battles with the boldens. I’m not them, they’re not boldens. They are, they’re not, they’re not, they’re not, they’re great actors. So maybe they would think those people, but they wouldn’t actually say that. So, yeah.
Can folks start to take their seats, please? Can folks start to take their seats, please? We’re gonna get the hearing started again very soon. Hello. I just want to remind folks to please keep remarks to three minutes. Thank you.
Shall we? Just wanna, yeah, shang.
Edwin?
So this is a continuation of Marissa’s—
Testimony.
It’s just a testimony, a testimony?
This testimony is through an interpreter, so it’ll be she and I.
I’ll do it in, I’ll do it in Spanish, she’ll do her part. Thank you.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Daniela Contreras. He sido trabajadora del hogar periódicamente desde que tengo dieciséis años. Actualmente soy una organizadora en la Alianza Nacional de Trabajadoras del Hogar. Estamos pasando por un momento cultural muy importante, desde la campaña Me Too hasta las mujeres que han tenido el valor de hacer público los abusos sufridos por personas de poder. El acoso sexual no solo es un problema en Hollywood, es en toda nuestra sociedad. Good evening. My name is Daniela Contreras, and I have been a domestic worker periodically since the age of 16. I am currently an organizer with the National Domestic Workers Alliance. Right now, we are going through a very important cultural moment, from the Me Too hashtag campaign to the women who have been brave enough to come forward publicly to talk about the abuse they have suffered at the hands of people in power. Sexual harassment is not only a problem in Hollywood, it is in our entire society. In the last two years, I have had the opportunity to meet and talk with more than 500 women. I have been able to listen to an infinity of stories of struggling women and workers. Unfortunately, most of these stories are full of pain, fear, trauma, and silence. It is the intimacy within the workplace that makes many employers take advantage of the situation. To achieve that these women share their stories requires a long process, since it is not easy to get their trust. One, as an organizer, takes on the role of a psychologist, mother, friend, woman, or sometimes even victims. Adding to the situation the fact that these workers suffer from racism, discrimination over their immigration status, all of this complicates even more the possibility of filing a complaint and obtaining justice. While listening to their stories of harassment, for many of them, the moment arrived for me to say that I had also been a victim of sexual harassment in one of my first jobs as a nanny. I’m sorry. I was 16 years old when this happened. One day, I was in the house where I worked when the father came home and went to take a bath. All of a sudden, I heard him calling me, and when I went to see what he needed, he opened the door to the bathroom and exposed himself to me. I was embarrassed by the incident, and I was very fearful, so I took the child to another room. But when he came out of the bathroom, he began touching me and tried to abuse me in the presence of the child. Fortunately, it was just in that moment, a neighbor began knocking on the door, and I managed to go out running from the house. Because of fear and embarrassment, I was silent about this for many years, and I had never told anyone, and I tried to forget about it completely. But all of these cases that have been coming to light have made me see that this is the moment that I had been waiting for. Today, I feel that I have done justice by that 16-year-old girl and for the thousands of women that are unfortunately going through all of this—this whole situation, day by day. We need more laws that protect domestic workers at the local and federal level. There is another testimony? The person’s name is Teresa Guzmán, who has given in her testimony. My name is Teresa Guzmán. I have been a worker—a domestic worker—for eight years. The reason why I am sharing my experience is because the voices of female workers in sectors such as ours, up until today, have not been part of the conversation, and the barriers to talk about this topic have been immense. I want to share an uncomfortable situation that is somewhat embarrassing for me. Some years ago, I had a case of sexual harassment. I was cleaning the apartment of a single man, a little older, and every time I went to his house, he would always be there. He would sit, and he would watch me while I would work, and he would always find a way to cause his private parts to brush against my body. Sometimes he would insinuate that he would like to go to bed with me, and he got to the point where he showed me a condom and asked me if I knew how to use it. I always pretended not to understand what he was saying because he was speaking English. He would always insist on taking me home after work, but I would always say no. One time, I had to accept because I had an emergency at home. The situation had gotten so uncomfortable for me that I commented on it one day to my sister about what was happening at work, and my sister would give her support to me economically so that I could leave the job, since I am a single mother. And I am the only form of support that my children have. When I told him that I would no longer work for him, he became very upset. On several occasions, when I would return to my home from my new job, I would find him outside of my house. Because of the fear that I felt because of the harassment, I had to move from home. I also knew that if, at some point, I would need to ask for help, the possibility that I would actually receive it would be minimal, since he was a police officer. It would have been my word against his. Unfortunately, I didn’t know where to go for help or whom to turn to, and I would walk around fearful all the time, praying that I would never see him again. I hope that my testimony serves so that these cases come to light and so that domestic workers will no longer be as vulnerable to this type of harassment.
Can I ask some questions for you or Marissa, whoever? How often in New York City do you get reports or complaints of sexual harassment, but you’re stymied by the four-employee minimum?
So for sexual harassment, I’ve been working on cases for the past two—year and a half. Three workers have come forward with sexual harassment, and they were stymied by the statute of limitations in particular. And then for discrimination, I’ve had three other workers who were stymied by the four-or-more limit.
When the four-or-more limit is the obstacle, do folks file at the state division or go to court? or, or go to court on, on state law?
No, what happens mostly is they will prioritize, um, cases, prioritize, because it's almost never just the one offense, um, and will look for whatever is the most, like, uh, clear, clear-cut, uh, process forward for a, a different, um, monetary offense, usually around, uh, overtime wage theft.
Yes?
Good evening. I would like to thank, uh, the Commission for having, um, my colleague, Elektra York, and myself here today from the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission. Uh, my name is Michael Rojas, and I am in charge of outreach and education for the EEOC New York District. Though this topic dominates headlines, it's not news to the EEOC or to the uncounted millions of women who have experienced harassment. Under the leadership of Congresswoman, Congresswoman Norton, the EEOC issued the first guidelines on sexual harassment in nineteen eighty, and in nineteen eighty-six, the Supreme Court declared that workplace sexual harassment violates Title VII of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four. In the years since, uh, the EEOC has received charges of sexual harassment across all industries and job categories, from the agricultural fields to the retail establishments to the boardrooms. The headlines scream of harassment by high-profile celebrities, but we investigate in behalf of the everyday white-collar and blue-collar victims whose stories are not heard and sometimes not told. Nearly one-third of charges filed by women invoke some type of harassment, and about fourteen percent specify sexual harassment. We know well that this figure does not represent the full extent of these violations and does not include sexual harassment reported by males. Studies show that sexual harassment is unreported, uh, is highly unreported. More specifically, through the EEOC Select Task Force on Harassment in the Workplace Report that was talked about earlier today, uh, which, which was a fifteen-month study that was created, um, that was highlighted through our, two of our commissioners and our acting chair. Um, it reported earlier this year that forty percent of women interviewed through this study said that they had experienced some type of unwanted sexual attention or sexual coercion. Yet, only six to thirteen percent of individuals who experienced harassment file a formal complaint. Why? Um, our report identified specific risk factors for sexual harassment, including cultural and language, language differences, young workforces, companies that protect high-value employees, and reflect significant power disparities. Victims fear termination, loss of promotion, retaliation or worse, including further physical or emotional abuse, and that these events go unreported and unpunished. So what can be done? Aside from the obvious legal and moral issues, there is a compelling business case for stopping and preventing sexual harassment, not just the cost of settlements, but the loss of productivity due to low employee morale, distorted and negative employee relationships, and high turnover. What else must be done? Correction must start at the top. Whether it's a large corporation or a small office or retail outlet, it has to start from the top. Employees must know that their complaints will be heard and acted upon, which is important for employers to do. When our office designs a remedy for a finding of sexual harassment, we require the adoption of a complaint process with monitoring, requiring management to accept its responsibility for maintaining a lawful workplace. We require the training to be tailored to the specific workplace, be interactive, and maximize staff engagement. We also added a bystander intervention training to be included. The EEOC has developed these new training programs and are already delivering them to, um, employers. Um, currently, we already have training set with, um, several New York City agencies as well to train over a thousand employees over the next couple of months. Um, we hope that our efforts will contribute to this tragically delayed public response to this epidemic of sexual harassment. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Sprotzer. I'm a staff attorney on the Workplace Justice Legal Team at Make the Road New York. Thank you so much for the opportunity to share this testimony regarding sexual harassment in the workplace and the critical importance of the city working to address the issue. Make the Road New York is a nonprofit, community-based membership organization with over twenty-two thousand low-income members dedicated to building the power of Latino and working-class communities. Our Workplace Justice Team represents hundreds of low-wage immigrant workers each year to enforce their rights under labor and employment laws. We routinely represent workers in sexual harassment cases, but we only know the stories of women who have overcome many obstacles to share their stories. We can only imagine the extent of the unreported abuse. It is critical, as many have said today, um, that the stories of low-income immigrant and undocumented women who work behind the shadows in the back of restaurants, retail, factories, homes, and actually make this city run are heard, and that we recognize the unique set of risks that they face in coming forward to report abuse. Approximately, approximately three-point-three million, million New York City residents are foreign-born immigrants comprising nearly forty percent of the city population. Fifty-two-point-eight percent of the foreign-born population in New York is comprised of women. Immigrant women in low-wage industries like restaurant services, manufacturing, domestic work, retail, clothing, and cleaning face many levels of abusive working conditions, which go beyond sexual harassment, including low pay, unsafe working conditions, and sexual harassment and abuse by their supervisors and coworkers. But few women come forward to report it. As others have cited, a two thousand sixteen EEOC report states that approximately ninety percent of victims of harassment in the U.S. report never taking formal action against their employer. Typically, our clients, and that statistic counts the workplaces that actually have procedures and policies in place for reporting harassment. Typically, our clients' workplaces do not have anti-discrimination policies or formal procedures for reporting sexual harassment. Employers typically tell me, "We tell everyone on the first day to treat each other with respect." That's the extent of the policies they have. Furthermore, immigrant women in low-wage jobs face additional obstacles in coming forward to expose abuse, including limited job opportunities, language barriers, lack of access to information, fear of retaliation regarding their immigration status. It's not uncommon for employers to retaliate and threaten workers' job security, wages, and deportation if they come forward. We've also seen several cases where employers' attorneys have been emboldened and raised our clients' immigration status in an attempt to intimidate them against moving forward with their case. One of our members, Maria, was subjected to severe sexual harassment by her supervisor at her retail job, which included repeated touching, aggressive sexual advances, offensive comments, and threats. Her supervisor would routinely corner her in a private area of the store where she worked and forcibly touch her despite her repeatedly telling him to stop. He reminded her that the owner was on his side, and no one would believe her if she spoke up. He threatened her that he would call immigration. Maria was still working for this employer when she first came into our office. She told us she needed the job to support her family, but she prayed that her supervisor would stop. She was terrified about what he would do if she complained, and she'd not even know who to complain to or even know that this was against the law. Her employer had no anti-harassment policy or complaint procedure in place. Eventually, she, the supervisor, fired Maria after she continued to refuse his advances. See, she subsequently learned that another employee, the woman, that another employee had suffered similar abuse under this supervisor, and that this employee did, in fact, complain about the harassment to higher management. Unfortunately, just as the supervisor warned her, management did nothing to investigate the employee's claims. She too was fired and was left unemployed for months as a single mother. Just want to point out that low-income immigrant women also face additional hurdles to being taken seriously when they come forward. We've seen multiple women who reported severe incidents of sexual harassment to the police, but found the police and the prosecution to doubt and devalue their experience and failed to move the cases forward. Transgender women of color face additional marginalization. One of our clients, Nadia, um, was working as a dishwasher when she was transitioning. After she told her supervisor he started to grope her and corner her, Nadia thought she had no alternative but to stay working in the restaurant, because no one would hire her because of her gender identity. Our legal team was, team was able to represent her and her claims and secure a U visa certification from the New York City Commission on Human Rights based on the abuse suffered. We commend the Commission for all its doing to protect the rights of workers across this city and to enforce the great laws that are in place. Um, we urge the Commission to expand coverage to domestic workers in private homes who are especially vulnerable, and also to continue to expand its outreach, education, and enforcement efforts to low-wage workers in the communities in which they live. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Natalia Varela. I work for Latino Justice. I'm an attorney. On behalf of Latino Justice ProLef, a national civil rights organization, engage in advocacy and impact litigation. Uh, we, of, of underserved Latino communities along the East Coast, I would like to thank you for the opportunity to address you today on the important issue of sexual harassment in the workplace, and in particular, how Latinas, immigrant women, low-wage workers face unreported, unwanted sexual harassment, assault, various forms of gender-based discrimination throughout New York City. Um, as many people have pointed out today, immigrant women are particularly vulnerable. Uh, this, so I don't want to repeat too much of what, especially what has just been said. Um, however, we, I would like to share some examples with you as well, which is, um, despite, but, but also let you know that despite the passage of Domestic Workers Bill of Rights in two thousand and ten, we have repeatedly seen domestic workers complain to us of wage theft, no overtime pay, no days off, a week, uh, a week for rest despite being entitled to at least one week, one weekly under the amended law, minimal to no sick or vacation leave, and of course, being exposed to sexual harassment. We are concerned that the hard-fought amendments of the human rights law, as well as the labor law, as a result of the Bill of Rights, are not being used as often as they could be to protect domestic workers from abuse. For example, one of our clients is a domestic worker based in Queens who worked for nearly seven years as a part-time live-in nanny and housekeeper for a family, caring for the children and the house. She was forced to sleep in tight quarters and often in the children's room, tending to them all hours of the night. She experienced nearly daily harassment by her employer, the mother of the children, who would call her insulting names and use vulgar language to speak to her. She gave her sexually illicit gifts that were demeaning and offensive and made sexually laced comments or accusations. With no one to turn to, no one to complain to, and particularly, no time outside of the house and away from her employers, in addition to her own financial responsibilities for her family, she felt forced to put up with the sexual harassment, and she never would have ordinarily accepted. Other clients have come forward with similar stories of working in factories or restaurants where they've been exposed to supervisors who make sexually explicit or offensive comments to them on a daily basis. All are low-wage Latina immigrant workers who work long hours in often hostile conditions. All are low-wage Latina immigrant workers. Um, and one client was pulled into a corner by a supervisor who claimed he wanted to speak to her about giving her a promotion. When he made illegal sexual and intimate propositions that were turned down, he retaliated by changing her work schedule, which made it impossible for her to tend to her family obligations, like picking up her kids from school. This retaliatory act was ironically used as an excuse by the employer as how they responded to her complaint, as an intent to separate her from the supervisor by punishing her while leaving him with the same salary, title, schedule, and access to other employees. We're, we're concerned about the, about our immigrant workers, uh, because in the current anti-immigrant, uh, anti-immigrant client, uh, climate, where employers use a worker's immigrant, immigration status as both a sword and a shield. Employers feel emboldened to discriminate openly against women, oh, against workers by harassing them, making inappropriate comments, withholding wages, or subjecting them to unsafe or unsanitary workplaces, all while reminding them that they should be grateful. When workers speak up or exert their rights, employers retaliate by threatening to call immigration officials, where they could face deportation proceedings. Because of the climate, of the climate of deep fear that many immigrants, including many of our clients, currently feel, they're hesitant to assert their rights and challenge sexual harassment and abuse. Um, I would like to skip to our suggestions, which is to encourage, to encourage training on how to work with immigrant workers, um, and looking at the very small details as to how sensitive it is to give your address, your information, and them, and these people who are investigating, who are doing the intakes, understanding that, and thinking about it throughout the process of the investigation. Um, it's very simple. They fill out these forms, and then it gets handed, handed over to the employer, and they had never maybe had their home address before. It, it subjects their entire family, uh, to potential retaliation. Um, in addition to that, uh, support, developing social service works, uh, for, or social services for these workers, uh, once they come forward, it's important because a lot of these people don't have medical insurance, and they have no other way of healing. But additionally, it is, it also serves for purposes of litigation, which for, because usually when you get to injury, the only way to prove injury is to have some sort of documentation of what, what has happened to you. Third is coordinating with other agencies to, for enforcement of anti-retaliation laws. Um, the New York Labor Law has tons of anti-retaliation laws, and being able to coordinate, often when we have workers come to speak with us, it's not just, you know, the sexual harassment actually comes up afterwards. It's usually, "I still haven't received my wages." So figuring out some sort of collaboration about how to enforce the anti-retaliation laws would be wonderful. Also, holding, holding info sessions in immigrant communities. And finally, uh, it's very hard to try to convince people to bring litigation or to exercise their rights, knowing what's going on in the courthouses right now. We encourage you to please speak up about how this affects your work and how it affects our work. You have powerful voices. You're a force to be reckoned with, and we really would appreciate your support in providing some security in getting these immigrant workers into the courthouse. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hi. Good evening. My name's Laura Berger, and I'm an attorney at the Immigrant Justice Project at the City Bar Justice Center. Um, the City Bar Justice Center is the nonprofit legal services arm of the New York City Bar Association, and our mission is to address the justice gap in New York City. And we draw upon our relationship with the private bar to leverage pro bono legal services on behalf of low-income New Yorkers. I'm also a member of the City Bar Association Sex and the Law Committee. Through policy reports and programming, our committee addresses issues pertaining to gender and the law and ways to reduce barriers to gender equity in, um, healthcare, the workplace, and civic life. I'd like to thank the Commission for drawing attention on the, to the important issue of sexual harassment in the workplace. Earlier this year, the City Bar Justice Center created an anti, anti-harassment and discrimination project in response to the increase in discriminatory harassment and bias attacks against minorities in the, in the city following the two thousand and sixteen elections. Our legal hotline has seen an uptick in calls concerning discriminatory or sexual harassment based on gender, and our callers are often referred to the Commission or matched with pro bono counsel in order to fully explore their legal rights. As the previous two speakers mentioned, immigrants are especially vulnerable to harassment and abuse in the workplace. Many of my low-income immigrant clients have faced sexual harassment, and the behavior they face from employers and managers runs the gamut from sexual propositions and unwanted touch to rape. Um, the facet of the issue that I wanted to draw your attention to tonight is, um, how immigrants who experience sexual harassment may be eligible for U non-immigrant status. Um, the U non-immigrant status is for victims of serious crimes and requires certification from law enforcement or agencies that have investigative authority over criminal acts. And these qualifying crimes can include abusive sexual contact, sexual, um, sexual assault and rape, all of which may occur in workplace sexual assault cases. Um, and in addition, where the perpetrator tries to prevent the victim from reporting the sexual harassment, they may be committing witness tampering or obstruction of justice, which also qualifies them to request U visa status. As one example, a client of mine worked in a restaurant where her boss made many excuses to touch her sexually and made overt sexual comments to her. When other male employees saw this, they also took that as a license to sexually harass her. As, and after one employee threatened to rape her after work, she said she would call nine-one-one, and he threatened to stab her if she did. She, she decided to quit her job to prioritize her safety and made a report to the, at that time, the State Division of Human Rights, and I was able to advocate on her behalf and obtain a U's non-immigrant status certification for her so she could apply for a U visa. Um, I know that the City's Commission on Human Rights already issues these certifications, and we are very thankful. Um, but many immigrants living in New York City are not aware of this immigration remedy and fear reporting sexual harassment because of the employment consequences, as well as the fear of their immigration status being exposed. So we would like to applaud the Commission for all the work you have done to promote your U certification policy. And, um, in this era of increased immigration enforcement, we urge the Commission to ramp up efforts to raise awareness of this process and to share immigration, um, or information in multiple languages to immigrant communities so that everyone, regardless of immigration status, can make a complaint to the Commission and feel safe doing so. Thank you so much for your time today and your input. Thank you so much for your time today and your interest on this important and timely issue. [applause]
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to provide a comment on behalf of Holaback. I'm Rita Passarel, Holaback's Board Vice Chairperson, and on a personal note, I'm a former employee of former New York State Assemblyman Vito Lopez, who resigned in 2012 following multiple reports of sexual harassment by his staff members. Holaback is a global movement to end harassment and ensure equal access to public space. Also, we're a story-sharing org, so I also want to thank everybody who was here tonight to share their stories and testimonies. The org was created to end street harassment, and we've expanded to address all forms of public space harassment, including online bullying. Many times, this harassment is targeted by perceived identity, often gender. Public space harassment is an essential consideration for workplace sexual harassment. First, most of us commute through public space to get to work, and what happens in public space can impact the workplace. Second, while at work, we may still be accessing public space, whether it is the physical public space or online public space of the internet. Third, separate traumas may compound each other. Street harassment can be repeat trauma on the workplace commute, causing employees to arrive to their job feeling anxious and distracted. During my own personal commutes, I've been groped and seen subway masturbators. In 2012, Holaback and the Worker Institute at Cornell partnered for a study of street harassment experiences. Reported emotional responses included anger, fear, helplessness, and PTSD. This can affect employees' overall well-being, impacting punctuality, attendance, productivity, and healthcare costs. Street harassment can impact any subsequent workplace sexual harassment by affecting employee response or willingness to report the workplace harassment. Online harassment is also very important to the discussion. For many people, online work is professionally required. For example, jobs for writers are in the media. Online harassment also causes emotional trauma, and it disproportionately targets women, the bombardment discouraging women from writing and earning a living online. This excludes women from professional activities online. Women writers, especially women of color, are giving up writing online as a result. A recent poll of Time writers found that half the women on staff had considered quitting journalism because of the hatred they faced online, although none of the men had. Holaback has developed a set of open-source resources for civil society organizations to better protect their staff from online harassment. Another important consideration that many of the other speakers have mentioned is the role of the bystander, for two reasons. Witnessing harassment can cause the bystander their own trauma, but also bystanders can have some important helpful effects on someone who's being harassed by bystander intervention. In service industries such as hospitality or restaurant work, sexual harassment numbers are reported as particularly high, so the bystander trauma and intervention may be especially important. It's also important to note that an inactive bystander tends to increase trauma. So for that reason, employers should train their staff on bystander intervention. So a few policy suggestions, just to summarize, I mentioned a few of them. Number one is to research the impact of street harassment and online harassment on employees' retention, turnover, and productivity, and the direct link between workplace harassment. And also, training for employers on how street harassment and online harassment impact their employee jobs, including bystander intervention. And finally, as the previous speaker had mentioned, sometimes 311 and 911 reporters don't know what to do when they're getting these reports, so additional training there would be helpful as well. Thank you.
Yes. [coughing] Good question. So you mentioned this research on street harassment experiences. Did you publish a report on this?
There are several reports. Yes, we have two with the Worker Institute at Cornell from 2012. The titles of those are "Experience of Being Targeted: Street Harassment in New York City", "Preliminary Findings," you'll see if you have the testimony, it's footnote three. And then there's also another one that is "When Street Harassment Comes Indoors: A Sample of New York City Service Agency and Union Responses to Street Harassment," also 2012, and that looks like it is footnote five for the first time. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the opportunity to testify today on sexual harassment in the workplace. I have to say, you all are hearing and learning so much, but everyone in the audience is also. It's really very powerful to hear the stories from different sectors particularly, and to see the intersection. I think we're all trying to find the intersections between these issues and this work. I think you all know that's what I represent. I'm Bev Neufeld, founder and president of Power New York. We're a nonpartisan group. We're 100 organizations working collectively to advance women's economic equality. We work on multi-issues, and we are very dedicated to workplace fairness, domestic violence, sexual harassment, reproductive rights. We see the intersection of all those things. Many of our partners spoke already today, and so I will not repeat any of the things that they said, and so therefore, I have half the testimony is left, which maybe is something that you're welcoming. But you'll be not surprised that I want to talk about equal pay, because I think you all know that that's an area that Power New York has been leading on. And as we have been studying this, hearing so much, all the information that's coming out, all the stories, for me and for many of us, we're saying, what is the emotional impact of this work, of what's happened to people? 20 years later, 30 years later, people still suffer. What we don't have a lot of information on is what is the financial impact? And so there is not a lot of information on that. There is not a lot of hard data. There's a lot of anecdotal information. I think I might be able to share a few things with you. I do want to mention that Power looks for concrete solutions, and so we've worked on the transparency issue in New York State. We just celebrated the passage of the New York City Salary History Ban, and if anything proves that we needed that, I think today's hearing does prove that women have been suffering from many causes of wage inequity. But I don't think we always consider sexual harassment as being one of the essential causes. So as we look for, in the future, for solutions to the wage gap, we will definitely focus more on the arguments around sexual harassment and the understanding. And even when we tell companies, you want to do better, you need to look at your sexual harassment rules. I think I can just add to the fact that occupational segregation is definitely one of the ways we try to close the wage gap, but how discouraging is it to hear the testimony today that I would have given you stats on, but instead, we got stories on the construction industry, on STEM. We are pushing our girls to go into the STEM fields, and yet, these are hostile and dangerous environments. I think I can only add maybe a little bit to that by a New Yorker magazine article just a few days ago, talks about 20 senior-level women in technology. It's called "The Elephant in the Valley." 60% reported unwanted sexual advances in the workplace. A large majority of those advances were from superiors. A third of them said that they worried about their personal safety, and almost 40% said that they did not report the incident because of fear of retaliation. This is the world we're preparing women to enter, and so how important is it for us to combat that? We've talked about many of the things. We don't need to continue. In the tech field, I do have to say, we do have proof or knowledge that 50% of the women who in STEM, who have had these experiences, leave the field. So think about the trajectory of someone's career, and what happens to, you know, their future economically, and how is that translated into their career paths? I don't think today we've talked enough about restaurant workers, and so in the testimony, there are stats that are offered from Rock United and Rock New York, and I have to say that they're shocking. 80% of New York-tipped restaurant employees experience unwanted sexual behavior in the workplace. 45% report it's a coworker. The restaurant industry accounts for 7% of working women, and 37% of sexual harassment cases. And when you consider that women cannot change their shifts because the night shifts are the good shifts, that's where you get the best tips. That's why Power is supporting the One Fair Wage Campaign, so that every shift is going to be a well-paid, fair shift. And I don't know what the city can do about that to forward that movement. We have good feeling from the state that this may happen. So the real-life outcome of all of this is that people quit their jobs rather than working. They seek new employment without the benefits of references. They have periods of no work. When we talked about the salary history, it's like, how do you explain that you didn't work for a period of time? How can you say that you had sexual harassment issues? And so we're in this Me Too moment, and I just want to share that the federal government in the 80s and then again in the 90s calculated the cost for the federal government, that their cost of sexual harassment, they came up with the whopping number of $327 million in cost over a two-year period. This is in the 90s, and they haven't recalculated. Things are better. So I guess I wonder, how is New York City doing? How much is this costing New York City? That includes sick leave, job turnover, productivity losses. So I encourage you to help the city have a "we too" response. That means we're part of the problem, but we're also part of the solution. We will be models for other companies and, you know, for the public sector. We applaud what you're doing. We're here to support you. The Power Network will do everything we can to promote any of the recommendations. Certainly, the contractor reporting is some ways that we've been working through some of the problems with equal pay, and I think that is a very good option for New York City. So thank you very much for letting us all talk tonight. It's so important for us to share this information, to see how we really are working, sometimes in separate silos, but really on the same issues. Thank you very much.
Thank you. [applause] It's an honor and privilege to be in this room, both to witness and participate in this historic hearing, and I want to just give a shout-out to those staff who organized the order of the testimony, because I feel like I have such a rich and vital context in which to make my remarks. My name is Casey Wagner, and I'm from the Worker Institute at Cornell. I appreciate not only this opportunity to be part of this historic moment, but with a special appreciation to Eleanor Holmes Norton, who was my North Star in 1980, in my early days of the movement, as a community organizer and counseling director at the Working Women's Institute. As the School of Industrial and Labor Relations at Cornell in New York City, we have an opportunity to work with unions, worker centers, and employers, and I'm going to talk very specifically about three models that I have done work with in relation to unions' role in leveraging their power and their unique opportunity when they partner with employers. One example is an immigrant-led service-sector union that leveraged its role as an employer to create a respectful and equitable workplace framed by union values. The second is a construction union that bargained with the Industry Employer Association for required training for supervisory staff on inclusion and diversity. And the third is a Joint Labor Management Work-Family Committee that launched a program to engage men and women as allies on issues of domestic violence as a union issue. In the first example, the top leadership made a three-year commitment to this training program, with an allocation of resources for staff time, a "train the trainers" model, and a commitment to union-wide implementation of over 300 staff, and then subsequent training of their members, who clean our office buildings at night and greet us at the door of our buildings. The leadership had the courage to allow the Worker Institute to conduct a staff-wide educational needs assessment audit, which enabled us to get a litmus test of the priority issues of the staff, giving the staff voice in the creation of this training and education program. And what was really remarkable for me about this was identifying what they constituted the scope and range of inappropriate workplace behaviors, what skill-building they wanted in a training, what did they want to learn, what did they want their coworkers to learn, what did they want management to learn, what did they want elected officers to learn? So it was a really good assessment of what would be meaningful in a training program to them. And then finally, an organizational-cultural climate. So we all heard about the fact of retaliation and fear of speaking out, and all the options to address and resolve issues. And so I wanted to find out, when you were dealing with a coworker, what options and strategies did you feel were available to you? When it was a power dynamic, what options and strategies were available to you? And we designed and tested a series of pilot trainings, trained 15 designated staff who came from the shop or union campaigns and other leadership positions within the organization as trainers who would then implement this program union-wide. And then this model created a sustained leadership group to integrate this into the life of the union. It wasn't a one-off. It wasn't a three-hour training, and it was done. It was integrated in the life of the union. The second was a collective bargaining agreement that was made between a particular construction union and the industry employer for a mandatory six-hour diversity and inclusion training for all their forepersons and superintendents in order for them to get a certification as a supervisor, in order, just like Leah was talking about, just like the certification that you need for safety and health. And I know my time is up, so I won't go into that in a lot of detail, but it was collectively bargained and mandated, and we did a series of training, frankly, that looked at issues of implicit bias and leveraging ally behavior, and using that to hold peers accountable, and then leveraging that power within the role as forepersons in safety trainings, raising it at the shop floor, at the construction site consistently, just like they do safety and health. And finally, a Joint Labor Management Work-Family collaboration that launched a workplace awareness and prevention program on domestic violence as a union and workplace issue in a predominantly male work group, looking at issues of male privilege, power, linking domestic violence to sexual harassment, heterosexism, homophobia, bullying, workplace violence, norms of toxic masculinity and violence, that ally, upstandard behavior. We reached over 1,500 employees and 125 managers on work time that was negotiated through a safety and health collective bargaining agreement. So it was on the employer's dime. And finally, at the end of the program, which was overwhelmingly male, 5% women, in a traditionally male-work environment, 97% of the men polled said that they would be more willing to talk with other men about their role to stop violence against women, and 99% of the men polled said that they would be more willing to take a leadership role to stop violence against women. So engaging ally behavior, empowering women, but having a workplace climate that makes this possible. Thank you. [applause]
My name is Liddana Lusher, and I'm a partner at Virginia Nambinder, where a law firm in New York City that represents workers that have been discriminated against, underpaid, and sexually harassed. My firm has counseled numerous employees that have suffered egregious forms of sexual harassment by their supervisor or their boss, as well as from coworkers. We've counseled employees that have been shown pornographic pictures, that have had cellphones stuck under bathroom stalls where photos were taken of them and their privacy, individuals that have been groped and grabbed, and individuals that have been intimidated into having sex with their superiors. And while we've spoken with employees that, in all types of industries, that have experienced this harassment, I'm going to focus on tech and employees in the tech and finance industries tonight, because we've counseled employees in those areas recently, and I thought that that's an area that I could speak to the Commission on. One of the things that my firm has noticed in counseling these employees is that a lot of times, they're given assignments on a temporary basis before they become permanent employees, which makes them particularly vulnerable to harassment. There are savvy harassers that will target these employees because they know that they're dependent on getting favorable reviews before they get permanent offers of employment. One such employee that we counseled worked for a prominent bank as a business analyst, and she was assigned to a supervisor who consistently harassed her throughout her employment. He used her status as a temporary employee to He used her status as a temporary employee to take advantage of her. First, he started out demanding that she accompany him to lunches and dinners, then telling her later that he needed more from her in order to renew her contract. He would grab her breasts, her buttocks, when she was alone in her cubicle. He consistently made degrading comments to her about her wardrobe and about the appearance of other women in the office, and he eventually demanded she have sex with him. She gave in to his advances eventually and tolerated this abuse for years because she was fearful that she would lose her job. While this employee finally decided to complain to other superiors at the bank, they dismissed her comments and simply responded that they knew that he acted inappropriately sometimes. This leads to another issue that I believe that temporary employees face, and that's that their complaints are often not taken as seriously as permanent employees. Companies know that they can terminate the contract of these employees and think that they won't be coming back to work there. Alternatively, sometimes a company's response is to transfer the supervisor to another department, thinking that this individual isn't going to prey on other employees. That's where I would echo the testimony of other individuals here that talk about mandatory training, that that could go a long way, particularly when companies think, and uses a defense often in litigation, that this person, well, we've moved him to a different department. Another area of concern for many tech and finance employees is that they have temporary authorization to work in the United States, and they're, again, fearful that if they were to complain, that authorization may get revoked, or they won't get their employment renewed. So again, I would echo testimony that you've already heard tonight, that the statute of limitations should be increased for these employees to make complaints, and for all employees. It takes a lot of courage for employees to get up and decide to complain, and it may take them longer than a year to be able to get that courage. And temporary employees can often get a permanent job status later on, that then they may feel more secure in their employment, and that a longer statute of limitations may allow them to then file a complaint. Finally, I will just address another area that was raised briefly, but that's arbitration agreements. More and more, as my firm counseles employees, we see arbitration agreements just pervading workspaces. And arbitration is important to realize in the sexual harassment context, because part of the whole hashtag Me Too is that everyone's getting out and telling their stories, and it's bringing these issues to light. And obviously, the commission is meeting tonight, because there have been so many stories in the news lately. When someone is forced to go to private arbitration, their claims are heard by a mediator, and they're not heard in public in open court. And there are often rules that they can't speak about what happens, particularly if a settlement is reached. By having mandatory arbitration, this prevents these stories from being heard. And then harassers know that the company has just paid off the employee, and that they aren't subject to any kind of retaliation, basically. The thing that we would suggest as far as the mandatory arbitration agreements is that the city could refuse to do work with contractors who have mandatory arbitration agreements for their employees. Or they could also make it mandatory that sexual harassment complaints are exempt from arbitration, so that these employees could then file their claims in court, and that these issues could be addressed on a more public basis. These are the suggestions that we have. Again, I'd like to thank the commission for this. I want to say on a personal note that my firm appreciates the work that the commission does, and that when a client comes into our office that has performed work in New York City, and when they have some type of claim, we know that New York City has the strongest, most liberal laws in the country, and we can evaluate that claim on a different level than we can from someone else that comes in from another area of the country, and we appreciate the work that you do. Thank you.
My name is Danielle Inanow. I'm a longtime Queens resident, and for the last 15 years, I've worked as an employment and civil rights lawyer. I now have a solo practice located in central Queens, and I appreciate the opportunity to address you here this evening. Throughout my career, I've represented many, many women who have been subjected to sexual harassment and other types of gender-related mistreatment in the workplace. And my clients have come from all walks of life, and have worked in every kind of profession imaginable. But I wanted to focus my remarks today before the commission on some things that we have not heard this evening, which are some of the significant challenges that I've observed women in tech and finance, which are two of our most important sectors in our economy As opposed to workers in other sectors, people who work in tech and finance are generally better educated, more highly compensated, they spend many, many years and many hundreds of thousands of dollars preparing for those high-power jobs that they hope they're going to one day get. But according to an excellent report that came out from the U.S. Equal Opportunity Commission last year, women in high-tech only make up 30% of the workforce and occupy only 20% of executive positions in that sector to date. In financial services, women comprise a larger portion of the workforce, approximately 48%, but there's still a significant lack of women leaders on top. A recent Harvard Business Review reported that only 20% of women occupy executive committee chairs, only 22% of women are in board seats, and only 12% of chief executive officers of large financial firms are women in the United States today. Based on my experience representing women in high-tech and finance, I believe that this gender imbalance, particularly among those people in power in these industries, allow discriminatory conduct in the workplace to thrive unchecked. Sometimes that happens passively, sometimes more actively, that discriminatory conduct is condoned. But what I've observed is that regardless of how entrenched sexual harassment and other discriminatory practices are in a workplace, when a woman comes forward in tech or in finance, and she sticks out her neck and complains, she usually will pay a high price, because retaliation is generally swift and certain. In banks, the boom-boom rooms of the 80s and the 90s still exist, they're just a little bit more hidden. I recently resolved a case that actually I didn't even want to settle, because the facts of that case were so good and so stereotypical, that I really wanted to try the case to educate the public on what's still going on in banks. My client was a young lawyer, fresh out of school, it was her first professional job, and she was the star of the department. She got all of this extra training and attention, and her supervisor told her that he wanted to be her mentor and nurture her and groom her. But actually, the type of grooming that he had in mind was very different. When he went to take her out to dinner, to celebrate the end of the year and their projects, he plied her with many alcoholic drinks, and at some point, he promised that he wanted to share with her confidential bonus information, but they needed to go to his hotel room to do it. And she was so shocked, but so trusting of this person who had been like a father to her, that she went, and he gave her another drink. And she suspected by the taste that it might have something in it, that he had actually roofied her, and then he tried to sexually assault her. And she put all of this together, because she is a brilliant woman, in a matter of seconds, and ran out of the room and collapsed in front of the hotel room in the street. Subsequently, she went to work, took two days to think about it, reported the conduct. Nothing happened to him, but she went from the rising star to persona non grata, and within two months, she was out. This is a typical story. And that's why I wanted to try that case, and that's why it resolved for 100% of its value. This happens all the time. It happens in tech, too. Ellen Powell, she is the patron saint of this for women in tech. She is the example that they look to when they think about coming forward with their complaints. And I think that while some women in tech have come forward, like Susan Fowler, who is maybe responsible for the termination of the CEO of Uber and 20 other people being dismissed, and Silicon Valley entrepreneurs have gathered together to call out sexual predators at venture capitalist firms, it's still a very entrenched problem. And I think more so in tech and finance, because people invest a tremendous amount of time and energy to get to a place in their professional lives, and then it's very difficult for them to just leave, which is ultimately what they have to do when they complain. Thank you so much.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Les Diaz Caboza, and I am the Training Coordinator at the Restaurant Opportunity Center of New York, a chapter of the Restaurant Opportunity Center United. For the past 16 years, Rock has advocated for better wages and working conditions for the 11 million-plus restaurant workers in our nation, more than 200,000 of whom live and work in New York City. Our industry is one of the largest and fastest-growing sectors and a powerful engine for the country's economy. Although it is a fast-paced, exciting, and diverse industry with a predominantly female workforce, these women's employment is concentrated in low wage of forefront-of-the-house positions. Sadly, these women are subject to some of the highest rates of sexual harassment on the job of any sector, a reported annually to the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission. This harassment can come from customers, managers, and even coworkers. As a former restaurant worker myself, I can attest to the various forms of this behavior, which can range from a policy as seemingly innocent as requiring a sexy uniform, to being expected to put up with the unwanted flirtation and advances from managers and customers, for the promise of better or more frequent shifts or higher tips. This can even escalate to unwanted sexual comments, touching and worse. Long before there was a Me Too moment being discussed in the media, Rock has been documenting the plight of restaurant workers being subject to sexual harassment. Our 2014 report called "The Glass Floor" explores this issue in detail. Most of us have heard the term "glass ceiling," which describes difficulties for women to climb the professional ladder for better positions. However, Rock's report demonstrates that standing on the floor itself has become insecure, unstable, and horrible for women because of sexual harassment. Women in the restaurant industry stand on the glass floor day after day, a brittle and secure surface that exposes them to sexual harassment for economics arrival. A quote from our report reads, "A restaurant job is often the first job a young woman obtains, whether she stays in the industry her whole life or moves on to another career." Countless young women start out as early as high school, working part-time positions as server busters, hostesses, and runners in the restaurant industry that are notorious for low pay along with sexual harassment. Rock has been working with Futures Without Violence Connect New York and others to develop trainings and resources for managers and restaurant workers to create a zero-tolerance policy in their restaurants. Rock New York urges for the passage of one-fair-wage legislation to pay this predominantly female workforce fairly and address the disgusting practice of sexual harassment. In my current position, coordinating Rock New York's restaurant training programs, I have to prepare future restaurant workers for the world of work. I look forward to the day when the new generations can be introduced to a workplace that is free of sexual harassment, and not think that this behavior is a rite of passage or an occupational hazard to be experienced if you want to get ahead. I thank the Commissioner and the Commission on Human Rights of NYC for giving us the opportunity to speak on behalf of our membership and many others who are victims of sexual harassment. Thank you.
Good evening. I speak tonight on behalf of Assemblywoman Carmen Delarosa, Assemblywoman for the communities of Washington Heights, Inwood, and Marble Hill. First, though, especially thanks to Commissioner Malalas, to all the sponsors, cosponsors of this evening, and their staffs who have made this evening happen. I also want to, having listened to so many people speak, want to extend an extra thanks and appreciation for learning from all the people who have spoken this evening. It is certainly time for us to come together and bring light to an issue that is impacting women in the workplace across the nation. It is true that both New York City and New York State have laws that are meant to protect employees from abuse and discrimination in the workplace, but in light of the fact that harassment continues to be pervasive in many industries, it is time for us to take a good look at how we are protecting women and making them feel safe at home and at work. In recent weeks, as I have read the many stories of women who have experienced the unimaginable at the hands of powerful men in the entertainment industry, the private sector, and in government, I am glad for the moments of awareness and displays of courage that have come through. With that awareness also comes the realization of the many, many untold stories of victims who have felt that they had no recourse to stop the harassment they are experiencing. It is an awareness that reminds me each day that I am the mother of a three-year-old daughter. She will be a teenager in only 10 years, and an adult woman making her way through the world not long after that. I want to make sure that we do everything we can so that she does not experience the harassment and abuse of power that so many women have experienced at work and outside the workplace. And as so many other speakers have noted tonight, we must also take note of the challenges that poverty presents in protecting women in the workplace, and how it plays out in communities across the city. It is often reported that women who feel or are perceived as vulnerable are more likely to experience abuse and harassment. Poverty is a vulnerability that can cause women to feel especially trapped in instances where abuse is present. In my district, about 50% of residents are foreign-born immigrants, 20% are living below the federal poverty level, and about 60% are considered rent burdened. When we look at the unemployment rate, 13% of residents are unemployed, much higher than the citywide average of 9%. In communities such as mine, where people are struggling to make ends meet, and for whom English may not be their primary language, or who may be newly arrived in this country, we need to ensure that women are not forced to stay in situations where they feel no choice but to stay silent or to maintain an abusive work environment for fear of becoming unemployed or underemployed. It's worth noting that employers in these communities tend to be smaller and often do not have proper mechanisms for employees to file harassment complaints without reprisals. I am glad today that you are providing a public venue to have this conversation in hopes of changing this crude reality, and know that we've learned on this from many of the previous speakers. I have been shaken by the stories of immigrant women, mostly undocumented or newly arrived, who have experienced abuse in the forms of threats to their immigration status. These are women who work in establishments where they are put on display, where they feel they have no choice but to put up with being belittled on a daily basis because they make ends meet. And today, I ask the commission to pay particular attention to these communities across their city. Across the city, we know that the loss of a job can lead to the loss of housing, the derailment of the pursuit of higher education, or the loss of needed healthcare benefits, which only serve to exacerbate the cycle of poverty. We need to make sure that the reporting of sexual harassment incidents no longer equals a demotion or the loss of a job. I believe tonight that there are three things we need to do to make sure are present in our places of work. First is a zero-tolerance environment, where employees know that from top to bottom, everyone will be held responsible if they participate in harassing behavior. Second is accountability. Sexual harassment policies must be clear as to what will happen to anyone who participates in or even allows for sexual harassment behavior to happen at work. Third is transparency. First is a zero-tolerance environment where employees know that from top to bottom, everyone will be held responsible if they participate in harassing behavior. Second is accountability. Sexual harassment policies must be clear as to what will happen to anyone who participates in or even allows for sexual harassment behavior to happen at work. Third is transparency. We must continue to call out abusers and report these instances for what they are. Secrecy will only breed further complacency. It is important that we push for independent monitoring and investigating of any instance of abuses or harassment. As I, as a legislator, get ready to go back to Albany for the 2018 legislative session, the issue of sexual harassment is one my colleagues and I plan to prioritize. There are a number of initial bills being proposed in the Assembly, and I will keep my district, our communities, and the commission and cosponsors informed as we move these bills forward. Two final notes. As a member of the Assembly's Mental Health Committee, I also plan to address the issue of sexual harassment and unintended, intended, and unintended consequences on victims' mental health and to continue this perspective. I welcome input from the commission and others on any legislative action that addresses this issue, as well as issues of the overall state of women and the challenges that we face. Also, although we know that women face the largest number of instances of sexual harassment, I would be remiss if I did not also mention my serious concern of how sexual harassment and violence have an outsized effect on transgender people, gay men, lesbians, and other vulnerable members of our communities who simply come to work to do a full and honest day's work. I ask, and I ask this knowing that it is a priority of the commission, that you continue to look for the input of these groups as you move forward in formulating any plans to eradicate sexual harassment in our city. Again, thanks to the commission and to everyone for holding this groundbreaking hearing. I look forward to working with you on an ongoing basis and to using every fiber of my being as a woman, a friend, and neighbor, and as a legislator to call out injustice when I see it, and to be an ally and advocate in this fight to eradicate sexual harassment in the workplace. Thank you very much.
Mr. Alman, you have the great distinction of being the last person testifying at this, at this historic hearing. You know, I, I want to say thank you, of course, to all the people who showed up tonight to share their personal stories. We talk about bravery and we talk about courage often in discrimination or harassment-related claims and cases, but it has really been, for me, you know, quite an experience to be in government right now and to be able to listen to people share their personal stories in this so very public way, and in a space where really, the reason you are sharing your stories is, is to, you know, increase protections, to make lives better, to force and compel government to take more action. So, I'm, we are forever in your debt for taking that step and making yourself vulnerable in this very public way. I want to also thank, of course, the advocates who showed up today to advocate and to share the stories that you have experienced with your clients. Being a former advocate myself, I know that as we go through these cases, we are oftentimes experiencing much of the, the, I use the word burden for lack of a better term right now, but the burden of the horror and the indignity and the vulnerability that we have to hear our clients tell over and over again, whether it's to government or to different entities, just to make their claims. So I thank you for taking the time out of your busy schedules to do this. I also know that taking on claims of sexual harassment, like many other forms of discrimination, it's not easy and it's not cheap. And it is a great, it takes great commitment and it takes great investment for organizations especially to take on these cases, so I thank you for doing that. I want to thank my colleagues in government who have showed up today as well to make their voices heard. I have felt very strongly that government needs to be out front in this issue, that there is a very important place for government to take as we are hearing more stories of sexual harassment and discrimination generally. And so I thank you for taking the time to do that and to show up for this hearing. I want to, I want to thank my staff, folks from the Commission on Human Rights. I came into, into government almost three years ago for the first time, and I feel daily blessed, again, for lack of a better word, at how I have such committed people on staff, real believers in human rights, who sacrifice time from their families and from, you know, other pursuits because they really believe in this work. They're the ones who have made this hearing happen. It would not have occurred if not for them. I want to especially call out my Deputy Commissioner for Policy and IGA, Dana Sussman, who's there in the back, and Edwin Tablada, who's also there in the back, also from our policy office, who are really instrumental. This, this hearing absolutely would not have occurred without those two people who are also responsible for putting together the order of the speakers and for really reaching out to make sure we had a great diversity of speakers present. And I want to, of course, thank my panelists. You know, one of the, the great prides I have in being in public service right now is, you know, the, the ability to, to share this, I think, very important moment, especially in local public service, with not only people who really believe in the work that we do in human rights, but people who represent the different communities that we work to, to, to provide resources to or strengthen. Representation is very important, I think, in government. It's very important in places of power. I am, this is probably one of the proudest moments of my time in, in public service, that I'm able to share this moment and this public hearing with my fellow commissioners, all of whom are also strong, you know, badass women in the fields that they, they're in, who have taken, again, time out from their busy schedules and from their lives to listen to this testimony. We will continue the work that we are doing so that after this hearing, we'll be continuing to take in written testimony again until the end of the month, so if there are, but people or entities that could not make it today, that were worried that they had missed the deadline for submitting testimony, please do encourage them to do that. And we will be looking at that along with tonight's transcript and meeting to discuss what our report and what our recommendations should include. I thank you again tonight. It's, it's a late hour, but I will now conclude this public hearing on sexual harassment in the workplace. Thank you very much.
[applause][1772.04]